I'm a seven oh three, I'll call to order of the city of Torrington planning a zoning commission meeting for October twenty six, twenty twenty two. Attendances by zoom or in person, a city hall auditorium room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. Call in at one six four six five five eight eighty six fifty six, meeting ID seven ninety five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty five, passcode nine zero seven one four eight. Moving on to the agenda, item number two, attendance serving on the commission this evening via zoom is Donovan Riley, Tom Telman, Starly Arias, in person, Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Lightford. There's no announcements, Jeremy, I believe. Moving on to agenda, item number three, minutes for approval, A. For the eight seventeen twenty two special meeting. Thank you, Greg. Diane, thank you, all those in favor.
Abstain, abstain as well.
Thank you, Donovan. All those in favor, I so moved. Moving on to agenda, item number three, B, minutes for approval for nine twenty one twenty two of a motion.
I'll take make a motion for you.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Hi.
One abstention from Commissioner Perisino. So moving out to agenda, item number four, public hearings beginning at seven PM, October twenty six, twenty twenty two, city hall auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A proposed zone map change applicant, the Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, location twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, proposal change zone to LB local business currently R six. Serving on the commission this evening is Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, Donovan Riley, Tom Telman, Starly Arias, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Lightford. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
Got to move it down there.
Thank you. Thank you.
City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Legal Notice, the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled the public hearing on the following applications on Wednesday, October twenty six, twenty twenty two, in the city hall auditorium room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Proposed zone map change applicant, the Charlotte Hungerford Hospital. Location twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, proposal change zone to LB local business currently R six. Time of hearing, seven PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco, is the applicant attendance, please?
Yes. Good evening.
Via zoom, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Timothy Kuhn, I'm a professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates in East Windsor, Connecticut. Here tonight representing the applicant Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, along with Brian Oler, who is also attending via zoom.
Okay, have the mailings been taken care of?
Yes, they have. They submitted the receipt to Jeremy, maybe has them.
Yep, I confirm it. And the sign was posted?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Please continue.
Okay, the the zone change map is up in front of you. This property is twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, which is the hatched property in this map. It is a one point eight six acre parcel located on the south side of New Litchfield Street. As you mentioned, it's currently zoned R six and we're asking for a change to local business LB. It's abutted to the east, which would be to the right by other land that is zoned local business. Our immediate abutter is occupied by US USDA offices. The the land to the south and west is zoned R forty, and this is undeveloped conservation, conservation land and wetlands. And then across New Litchfield Street to the north, we're zoned R fifteen, however, that lot directly across the street there identified as lot three actually has commercial businesses in it. There's a automobile repair, I believe, auto superior auto and truck and a chiropractor's office. We did provide an A two existing condition survey of the subject property. And if you looked at that, it will show that the there's an existing medical office building on this parcel. This medical office use would be a use as of right if if this LB zone change is approved. There you go, the current lot structures and parking conform to all of the bulk requirements and zoning requirements for the LB zone. The zone change would really just be an extension of the existing LB zone and the LB cluster that's located to the east of our property. Actually, I believe that our immediate butter, a butter to the east, the USDA building, that property received the same zone change to LB in twenty twenty. Therefore, we do believe that this is, you know, the change, we're still compatible with the surrounding area. We also believe that the change is consistent with the goals of the plan of conservation and development, in particular to maintain the basic character and quality of life of the city with a suitable mix of residential, commercial, agricultural, and industrial zone property while continuing to provide a mix of residential property. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and we would ask, did you approve our application sheet?
So the current use of the building is going to remain the same as it was in the the R six, correct? Nothing changed. It's not spot zoning. We have local business. Any commissioners have any comments or questions at this point? Jeremy, what's your, dive into your memo, please?
The Charlotte Hungerford Hospital has submitted an application to propose a zone map change from the current R six residential zoning to an LB local business zone for property located at twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street. Assessors map two nineteen, block zero zero three, lot zero zero eight. The property is eighty one thousand twenty one square feet in an area. The property is currently owned by Charlotte Hungerford Hospital. The property is serviced by public sewer and public water. The applicant has submitted a class A two survey titled Existing Conditions Plan, Property of Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, Torrington, Connecticut, map two nineteen, blocks zero zero three, lot zero zero eight, dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, one sheet, and a class D survey titled Property of the Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, Torrington, Connecticut, map two nineteen, block zero zero three, lot zero zero eight, zone R six, dated August twenty second, twenty twenty two, one sheet, prepared by Russo Surveyors and Engineers, East Windsor, Connecticut. The map, the maps conform to the zoning map requirements of section eight point seven point one for a proposed change in his zoning district boundary. The subject property is adjacent to property zoned LB local business immediately to the east of this property along New Litchfield Street. This property would add to a contiguous cluster of LB zone parcels extending east and west along the south side of New Litchfield Street. This LB cluster contains a mix of retail storefronts and offices along New Litchfield Street. The property would remain bounded by undeveloped R forty residential zoning consisting mostly of conservation land and wetlands to the south and west and R fifteen zoning to the north side of New Litchfield Street containing existing single family houses. In reviewing the applications and maps submitted, I have the following comments. One, the property currently houses medical offices. Two, the change in zone to LB would cause all existing uses in the building on the property to conform as as of right uses rather than special exception uses. Three, the current structures and uses onsite conform to the both zoning regulations in section four point one two of the zoning regulations for the LB zone. This includes lot size, lot width, and existing building setbacks. Four, this property would share the western boundary with a contiguous cluster of LB zone parcels extending east along with New Litchfield Street. This proposed zone change does not represent spot zoning. The zone change would further the overall goals of the Business Development Section of the twenty nineteen Torrington Plan of Conservation and Development in section eight point two, which which states maintain the basic character and quality of life of the city of Torrington with a suitable mix of residential, commercial, agricultural, agricultural and industrial zoned property while continuing to provide a mix of residential property. In my opinion, this requested zone change would further the overall goals of the P O C D. Other staff comments, Economic Development Director, Rista Malaka, A I C P, Torrington Economic Development Director verbally indicated her support for the zone change to me. Assistant Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, in an email to me dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, stated that he had no comments on the application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta, in an email to me dated October twelfth, twenty twenty two, indicated that he has no comments on this application. W P C A, Mary Parati, W P C A Administrative Assistant, in an email to me dated September twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, stated that the W P C A has no comments on the application. Engineering, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer Paul Consons, in an email to me dated October eleventh, twenty twenty two, stated that he has no comments on the application. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, in an email to me dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty two, indicated that he has no comment on this application. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, in an email to me dated October twelfth, twenty twenty two, stated that he has no comments on this application. Conclusion, the proposed zone change was discussed with the mayor and city staff at the September twelfth, twenty twenty two land use staff meeting, and no objections or concerns to the proposed changes, change were voiced. The Connecticut General Statutes requires the commission, when making a decision on a zone change, to take into consideration the plan of conservation and development prepared pursuant to CGS eight dash twenty three. In my opinion, the commission, the commission can make a finding that the proposed zone change is in accordance with the goals and recommendations of the twenty nine, twenty nineteen Torrington Plan of Conservation and Development. I recommend approval of the requested zone change from R six residential to LB local business with the effective date, the day after the date of publication of the approval.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioners have any comments? We're going to public, no. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Being done, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, does the advocate have anything else to add, or you're all set?
We are.
All right, the time is seven sixteen, I declare the public hearing closed, and we will make a decision.
I'd like to make a motion to approve proposed zone map change applicant, the Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, location twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, proposal change zone to LB local business currently R six. The commission finds the proposal to be consistent with the city of Torrington's plan of conservation and development. The effective date of the zone change shall be the day after publication of legal notice of decisions in a local newspaper.
Have a motion, have a second?
Tom Telman, second.
Favor.
Bye.
Bye. Both, so both, good luck. We're on to agenda, item number four, B, the time is seven seventeen, public hearing, re-subdivision application applicant is Keith Bodwell, P E L S, location Albert Park Road. Assessors map one thirty five, block zero zero three, lot zero five two, proposal, three lot re-subdivision of a four point one acre parcel in the IP zone. Serving on the commission this evening, Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Greg Perisino, Starly Arias, Donovan Riley, Tom Telman, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Lightford. Is the applicant in attendance, please? Actually, you got a legal notice?
The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following applications on Wednesday, October twenty six, twenty twenty two, in the city hall auditorium room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Re-subdivision application applicant Keith Bodwell, P E L S, location Albert Park Road, assessors map one thirty five, block zero zero three, lot zero five two, proposal, three lot re-subdivision of a four point one acre parcel in the IP zone. Time of hearing immediately following the close of the first public hearing, which begins at seven PM.
Thank you, is the applicant in attendance, please?
Good evening, Keith Bodwell, Bodwell Engineering Surveying. We are proposing a three lot subdivision of the parcel located at the corner of Kennedy Drive and Albert Park. As you can see in the land that Jeremy's bringing up on the screen there. This is a concept plan, so some proposed concept buildings that could be built there. But we're not seeking the building approvals right now, just the subdivision. It's parcel that's got a large chunk of wetlands in the back of it. There's three upland areas, three distinct upland areas. So we're looking to subdivide it so that each of those areas would be their own parcel.
Yeah, just to make it the right.
There's been a few updates on those plans since Germany and I met. Buildings that from those plans, buildings has been slightly reworked to move them slightly further away from the wetlands line to allow while the
We had, we had some general concerns about being able to grade around the corners of the building, even in the concept, so we had to make some adjustments.
So we moved the buildings a little further away and are proposing cheap pylons be installed around the wetlands areas to protect the wetlands and streams from many disservice during construction.
So you have the parking area there.
Parking is under the buildings.
Okay, all right.
So the underbuilding part, so there would not be.
So your access to these lots, one on Albert Park?
And then two on Kennedy.
Okay, all right.
There, as you can see from the wetlands, they're very distinct areas of upland that we have here. That can't be really accessed from any other location, so we're dividing it so that each are their own parcel.
And obviously, you're at least twenty five feet away from the neighboring properties being residential, correct?
Yeah, that's seventy five.
Seventy five. You're actually seventy five feet.
Seventy five feet from the residential.
All right, this wetlands that's indicated here, that's, I see one section of Stratton Brook is running through there.
Yes.
Seasonal water course running through here.
Correct.
Define seasonal.
Under, under the, under the wetlands regulations, they're defined as intermittent.
Okay.
So, so they're flagged as as regulated water courses, but they're intermittent.
All right. So you're roughly nine thousand ninety three hundred square feet, six thousand, seventeen thousand.
Yeah, like I said, we're, these buildings would have to come, we'd have to come back to you for.
Certainly.
Right.
Right.
So there would be office buildings that potentially, that's, yeah.
They're building.
Yeah.
Wait, spell out.
Yeah, we're trying to build a lot, they have city water, city sewers around in the road there.
All right, any commissioners have any questions at this point?
It's, it's at a, that's at a busy corner right there.
It is.
Really busy.
I'm kind of driving Albert, right?
Well, this, this intersection is difficult.
Yeah, we're on the outside of the curve. The opposite side is much worse when you try to come out of Albert Park, but on this side, you have very good sightline going down the road.
Yep.
Because we're on the outside of the curve there.
So this is in between Albert Park and the daycare, that going up, or?
No, I think it's, it's, yes.
This is Deer Crest.
If you're coming out of Albert Park, Park Drive, it's to the left, it's back going to the left.
This is where the two office buildings are here.
Right, it's the colonoscopy center.
Exactly. Willa Pfeifer.
Deer Crest wraps around it.
Ultimately, if this was proposed for one building, obviously prior to a subdivision, the entrance and exit would have been where? Was never laid out.
It hasn't been, this was an extra parcel years ago from, that was just subdivided off when they did the Deer Crest subdivision.
Okay, you have the housing.
The housing part, it was subdivided into two parcels before they even created the Deer Crest subdivision.
Okay.
Pre-existing lot from that.
Okay.
Just one big piece of.
So it was just one big piece of property left over from the, they split off from the, before they did the Deer Crest subdivision.
So there's a fair amount of wetlands back there then, huh?
Yes.
Abutting the the residential area?
Yes.
All right.
Which will provide a big buffer for the residential, you won't.
Right, right. What's this? For example, the larger building near the seventeen thousand six seventy two?
Yes.
What's your setback from from the residential area on that? You got a scale roughly?
One forty seven.
Ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, one hundred and seventy five feet something.
Okay. Yep.
That's all wooded and everything through there, so.
And all of that would stay the same?
Yeah, ultimately, it would all be, it's all basically protected by the wetlands.
Right.
Well, he's got to come back.
Right, yeah. Dive into your memo, please?
Yep.
Keith Bodwell, P E L S, on behalf of Irene Mary Jolly, has filed a three lot re-subdivision, re-subdivision for property located at the corner of Kennedy Drive and Albert Park, assessors map one thirty five, block zero zero three, lot zero five two. The parcel was initially created in nineteen eighty eight, has leftover land from the Deer Crest Woods subdivision. This parcel was not included as part of the residential subdivision plans and subsequently zoned IP industrial park. Maps number thirty three eighty four, thirty three eighty three, and thirty eight eighty nine from the city land records have been included in the application file. The property is four point four five acres in size. The lots are proposed to be serviced by public sewer and public water. This proposal will re-subdivide this parcel into three parcels. Lot one is proposed to be seventy thousand one hundred and thirty one square feet, one point six one acres in area with three hundred and forty seven feet of lot frontage along Albert Park Road. Lot two is proposed to be sixty five thousand three hundred and forty square feet, one point five acres in area with four hundred and twenty eight feet of lot frontage along Kennedy Drive. Lot three is proposed to be fifty eight thousand three hundred and seventy square feet, one point three four acres in area with two hundred and eighty seven feet of lot frontage along Kennedy Drive. These proposed lots all meet the minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet and one hundred and fifty feet of lot width in the industrial park zone. The maps submitted are titled subdivision plan, Jolly Property, Kennedy Drive and Albert Park Road, map one thirty five, block zero zero three, lot zero five two, prepared for Harry and Irene Jolly by Bodwell Engineering and Surveying LLC, West Cornwall, Connecticut, dated August, August twenty twenty two, revised to October twenty six, twenty twenty two, two sheets. In reviewing the subdivision application and plans, I have the following comments. One, subdivision maps number thirty three eighty three and thirty three eighty four filed in the Torrington Land Records dated April nineteen eighty eight indicates that this property is labeled as other land of AT properties and appears to have been created in its current form as a result of the Deer Crest subdivision approval. Two, the applicant has requested a waiver of the full sediment erosion control plans and stormwater management plans until the proposed future development of the lots in accordance with sections four point six and four point seven of the subdivision regulations. Three, the applicant is required to provide set aside open space for a fee in lieu in accordance with section five point five point two and five point five point three of the regulation. A note is currently included on the submitted plans requesting a waiver of this requirement. With much of the property consisting of wetlands, a fee in lieu is likely the only option on this property. See subdivision regulation section five point five point two point B. In accordance with section five point five point three of the subdivision regulations, the applicant shall provide an appraisal of the property and pay the city a fee of ten percent of the value of the land. Payments to the city shall be divided equally between parcels and paid upon transfer or sale. A notice shall be placed on the land records for each parcel indicating the fee. Four, the following information appears to be missing on the plans and shall be provided for or a waiver requested. Proposed location for water lines, section nine point one, electric, gas, and other utilities, four point four point two zero and four point four point two eight. Number five, none of the land in the subdivision is in the flood plain. Other staff comments, Rista Malaka, Economic Development Director. In previous meetings discussing this project and in an email to me dated nine nineteen twenty two, Ms. Malaka conveyed her concerns regarding the buildability, buildability of these parcels and as indicated on the plans and asked to consider basic grades and soil erosion control plans be aided, be added to the plans to clarify future development ability. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, in an email to me dated nine twenty eight, twenty twenty two, Mr. Nardi Cyrus offered the following comments. Wetlands, there are regulated wetlands and water courses within the subject property that require wetlands review for this proposal. The applicant submitted a wetland permit application on eight sixteen, twenty twenty two with the permit number WC twenty two zero eight zero one issued on nine thirteen, twenty twenty two. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, lighting, and signage, there are no comments. Conservation, this applicant was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review and comment. Fire, in an email to me dated on October twelfth, dated October twelfth, twenty twenty two, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta stated that he has no comments on this application. Engineering, in an email to me on October eighteenth, twenty twenty two, City Engineer Paul Conson stated that he has no comments on this application. W P C A, Ray Drew, Public Works Director, in an email, in a memo to me dated nine twenty two, twenty two, indicated, one, we have no comments regarding the planned subdivision itself. Two, however, if the lots are developed, the applicant will need to provide additional. Uh, hang on one sec, we just lost sound. Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
All right, thank you. WW, yeah, W P C A, number two. However, if the lots are developed, the applicant will need to provide additional information to include the following. A, show proposed sanitary sewer lateral connection for lot number one on Albert Park Road. B, sep- separate private laterals for lots number two and number three will need to run. They cannot be tied together as shown on the current plans. C, cleanouts for these laterals will be required. Three, sanitary sewer discharge permit applications will be required when any buildings are proposed on the lots. Four, water discharge, water, stormwater discharges shall comply with the city of Torrington Department of Engineering standards. Five, for information or questions, contact W P C A, eight six oh four eight five nine one six six. Police traffic, no comments were received. Waivers, per section three point five of the subdivision regulations, the commission may waive the requirements of the subdivision regulations by a three fourths vote of the commission members, provided all the following conditions are met. One, the applicant requests the waiver in writing. Two, their request shall detail the waiver requested and shall provide sufficient information for the commission to determine if any hardship is involved. Three, the physical characteristics, characteristics of the property are such that strict application of these regulations would result in an impractical development or unusual hardship. Four, the waiver will not result in any significant adverse impacts on adjacent property or on public health or safety. The commission shall state on the record the reasons for granting the waiver. The applicant has verbally requested waivers from the requirements, from the requirements of the zoning regulations, section four point six and four point seven, for the submission of a full soil and erosion control plan and a full stormwater management plan. I am supportive of these waivers pending a submission of a written request and a condition that those full plans be submitted upon development proposals for any of the resulting lots. Conclusion, I recommend approval of the re-subdivision of property known as assessors map, block one three five, block zero zero three. Block zero zero three, lot zero five two, Kennedy Drive and Albert Park Roads into three parcels of land with the following conditions and recommendations. One, per section five point five point three of the subdivision regulations, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of open space. This fee shall not exceed ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to the approval of the subdivision. The fair market value of the land to be subdivided shall be determined by an appraiser. The cost of the appraisal shall be paid by the applicant. The appraisal shall be completed prior to the filing of the re-subdivision plan on the Torrington Land Records. A fraction of the total fee shall be paid to the city at the time each lot is first sold or transferred. The numerator of this fraction is one, the denominator is three, the number of approved building lots in the approved subdivision. Then the note requesting a waiver of this provision shall be removed from the final filed plans. Two, iron pins shall be set in the lot corners in accordance with the re-subdivision map prior to filing the record re-subdivision map. Three, per section three point ten point three point G of the subdivision regulations. The final approved re-subdivision map and the final site development plan shall contain the tax assessor's map block and lot for each lot in the re-subdivision as assigned by the engineering department. Four, upon proposals for construction of any of the resulting lots, a full soil erosion control plan and stormwater management plan shall be submitted. Five, in accordance with section three point ten point one of the subdivision regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plans, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the full approved plans for filing with the city clerk. Each Mylar sheet shall bear, shall bear the chairman's signature box and engineer's seal and living stamp. C, final copies of the paper and Mylar plan shall include conditional modifications as outlined in this memo. D, Mylar sheets shall be filed with the applicant, by the applicant with the city clerk within ninety days after the signature of the chairman.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any comments?
No.
No.
Certainly. I'll go to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Being none, if anyone would like to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dorian Brenner and I live at thirty-one Deer Crest Drive. And I'm take, kind of taking this all in and I went online and I looked at the plans and there's. Water runs through that stream constantly. You go in the back during a major storm, you can hear the water, it's roaring. I open up my bedroom windows because it is so peaceful to listen to that. It is by far a seasonal stream. Also, I'm thinking too of the traffic now, Kennedy Drive, I leave for work every day, go to Kennedy Drive. You have to wait cars upon cars upon cars trying to get out. Albert Park Road, it's gonna cause traffic on our Albert Park Road. I just feel that with all the empty spaces in Torrington office buildings, I think there would be a more suitable. Place for them to build these office buildings instead of in the back of our yards and our property. So I really think, please consider this, please do the right thing and just please, it's not the site for these office buildings. I thank you for your time.
How y'all doing? Clint Ikeman, Seven Deer Crest Drive, right on the corner, Albert Park. Kind of piggyback off of her statements with traffic, Albert Park's already pretty Wild West-like with the traffic. Kind of have to restrict my kids from playing in the front yard when they do. Not only that, but the, the stream that we're talking about is not all that far from back of my house if you walk back there. So the proposed building that you guys are talking about for, on the Albert Park exit is gonna be. The property widens from my house on down. So that's gonna, I feel like that will hurt not only the value of my property, but the sellability if I ever do go to sell. Nobody wants to buy a house that's backed up to an office building. I, I would ask you to reconsider.
Maybe, I'm gonna shift back to the engineer just for a moment. Can you maybe just point out on this plan? So you have the entrance off of Albert Park. You're going directly into the parking area of the building. So there's no other driveways around the building and then?
The direction.
Like I said, this is concept plan.
Right.
Right.
And where's the entrance off of Kennedy?
They go straight in as well.
One here.
Okay. Okay. And again, right to the parking.
First, this is concept.
Yeah.
So we'd have to come back to you with any, when we go to design buildings where.
Well, conceptually, you just questioned, you know, for example, the something. One way in, one way out?
What, yes. One way in, one way out of each.
Well, it's a two-way entrance.
Well, it's a two-way entrance, yeah. And it's.
You have an entrance for each building.
Each building, yes.
I'm saying, once you're in that building for parking, you came in one way and you're going out that same way, correct? Okay.
And this is an industrial park zone, so whether, you know, whether, whether it's office buildings or some other industrial park use. It's not.
I know this is all conceptual, but what is the potential of the amount of occupancy that these buildings can?
It's, they're just concept buildings.
Are those maximum footprints?
Those are the maximum footprints.
So you, so you won't possibly necessarily be building, building that. Yeah.
This is just. Concept building or subdivision. Is there maximum?
Okay.
It would, you know, theoretically, it would go through a full engineering review for each lot with, with full, with full stormwater plans and. And perhaps depending on the proposal of traffic study.
Based on the wetlands and everything else, those you look at the maximum footprint that they could fit in that.
Right. This is just purely to divide the one parcel into three. They're not really, it's not really one usable parcel because the way the upland is on it, so it's purely for that and it's concepts to show that what could potentially be built, but they're. The maximum building that could really fit on that lot.
I just, I really think the traffic. It's a very busy quarter.
So again, I don't mean to interrupt, but the people on Zoom. Continually hear us?
I've been able to hear.
A brook running right behind our house.
That's probably just, you know, drain, but it's all, this all is wetlands.
Okay.
So this whole, that's why we're not running, proposing anything back there.
Okay. Alright, so no change to the water?
No, well, these are all just in the high spots that are, that are left.
What's the buffer between the top three?
This is seventy-five feet here, so it's over a hundred to the building from these lots over here.
And lighting at night and things like that that would affect?
That would be part of another application most.
Yeah, when we, when we actually go to develop it, then we'd have to come back.
Alright, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Lisa Boardman, thirty-nine Deer Crest Drive. I would just like to state what has already been stated, that stream is not intermittent or seasonal. It cuts through a portion of my property and it is flowing all the time, especially after it rains, it quits quite deep and wide and roaring.
Well, with the designation of that, it does still fall that water course is in the wetlands area. Which is restricted from buildings, so.
Okay, well, you said it was intermittent, it's not.
Yeah, they're reg, they're regulated the same, but it's still in the water, there's no difference in how they're regulated.
Okay.
If, if intermittent water courses are pulled into, to regulations, you know, the same way permanent water course would be. Just, just wanna clarify that part anyway.
It's just basically a stream without a name, it's not a name stream.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this application? Any commissioners have any comments?
Yeah, Tom Tom, and I just have one question. If this land wasn't subdivided, would it still be developable? In the, in the same scheme that it is right now, if they wanted to build?
Theoretically, yes, you can put multiple industrial buildings on one site. So whether the lot is split or not split, it doesn't really have any bearing.
At the end of the day, it's the same process.
Yeah. If yes or one or should be correct, yes, at that point.
That's all.
Yeah, maybe just to put. The public's mind at ease. This preliminary. For the subdivision, if in the event that this goes forward, it'll be another layer of application and. Critiquing, so to speak, once these are laid out and an application is submitted in the future.
Right, so where is actually gonna be built there?
Actually, much, much more strict.
Much, yeah, we'd have to give you a lot more information than that. It's a purely concept.
Alright, time is seven forty-seven, public hearing closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve re-subdivision application, applicant Keith Bodwell, P E L S. Location Albert Park, Assessor Map one thirty-five, block zero zero three, lot zero five two. Proposal three lot, re-subdivision of a four point one acre parcel in the IP zone. With the following conditions and recommendations. Waivers, the applicant has verbally requested waivers for the requirements of the zoning regulations, sections four point six and four point seven. For the submittal of a full soil and erosion control plan and full stormwater management plan. One, per section five point five point three of the subdivision regulations, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of open space. This fee shall not exceed ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to the approval of the subdivision. The fair market value of the land to be subdivided shall be determined by an appraiser jointly selected by the applicant and the commission. The cost of the appraisal shall be paid by the applicant. The appraisal shall be completed prior to the filing of the re-subdivision plan on the Torrington Land Records. A fraction of the total fee shall be paid to the city at the time each lot is first sold or transferred. The numerator of this fraction is one, the denominator is three, the number of approved building lots in the approved subdivision. The note requesting a waiver of this provision shall be removed from the final filed plans. Two, iron pits shall be set in lot corners in accordance with the re-subdivision map prior to the filing of. Filing the record re-subdivision map. Three, per section three point, ten point three point G of the subdivision regulations, the final approved re-subdivision map and final site development plan shall contain the tax assessor's map block. Lot for each lot in the re-subdivision as assigned by the engineering department. Four, common proposals for construction on any of the resulting lots, a full soil and erosion control plan and stormwater management plan shall be submitted. Five, and according to the section three point ten point one of the subdivision regulations, the file shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plans, including the engineer's stamp and the chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the full approved plan, filed with the city clerk. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box and engineer's seal and living stamp. C, final copies of paper Mylar plan shall include conditional modifications as outlined in this memo. D, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk within ninety days after the signature of the chairman.
I was in favor.
Aye.
All right. Buran, the gentleman number four C. The time is seven fifteen, special exception, number twenty-two dash zero seven, site plan fourteen twenty-two, Advocate Penrose Associates LLC. Location eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five, Mission Avenue, proposal new construction of self-storage units. Serving on the commission this evening is Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Director of Resinos, Starly Areas, Dr. Riley, Tom Tom, also the pets. It's myself, Brett Neil, and City Planner Jeremy Leifer.
Planning and zoning permission has scheduled the public hearing on the following applications on Wednesday, October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, City Hall Auditorium. Room two eighteen, one forty, Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. See special exception twenty-two dash zero seven, site plan number fourteen twenty-two, Advocate Penrose Associates LLC. Location eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five, Mission Avenue. Proposal new construction of self-storage units, time of hearing immediately following the closing of the second public hearing.
Okay. Is the applicant in time this place?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Peter Herbst, I'm an attorney with our office at three sixty-five Prospect Street in town. This evening, I'm representing the Advocate Penrose Associates. Earlier today, Mr. Chairman, I emailed Lona the letters, certified mail letters, I'd like to provide the commission with the original receipts this evening.
And was assigned most of?
Yes, the sign was posted on the property on the twelfth of October. And we sent photos of the sign on the premises to Lona as well. I personally drove by the sign every day, it's on my way from work to home, twice a day, and the sign was there all the time, it was there this evening. This is a special exception and site plan application for the construction of self-storage warehouse units with associated site improvements. It's on parcels known as eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five Mission Avenue. Which are both owned by the applicant and these parcels in part would be merged to, to create this project. Eight ninety-five is a quarter acre parcel that currently has a three family home on it. Eight eighty-seven is raw land consisting of just under three quarters of an acre. Eight-eighty-seven is raw land consisting of just under three-quarters of an acre. The southerly of water to this property on Mitcham Avenue is, uh, the former Scarpelli site where Sanoco is being constructed. The northerly of water is the parcel that contains Michael's auto repairs. You may recall that Pinrow Associates appeared before you in twenty-eighteen, four years ago, at that time, my loan agreement room was representing them. The two gentlemen with me this evening who I'll introduce are with S L R, which is the company that my loan agreement room merged into. You approved their application for zone change app, uh, which enabled them to build a self-storage facility at four sixty-five South Main Street. That facility was built on two parcels of land roughly the same size as these two parcels, and they were merged at that time. I note that, uh, Mr. Leifer has reviewed the application. He provided us with a very comprehensive report. And the report does recommend approval of the application with specific conditions and recommendations. At this point, I'd like to turn this over to Dave Dixon, who is a landscape architect with my loan agreement room, and also this evening Ryan McAvoy, who is a professional engineer with my loan agreement room, is also present. Dave?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dickson, my name is David Dixon. I'm a principal landscape architect at the firm of S L R, I've been with the company for thirty years. Uh, we're happy tonight to, uh, to be here to present this, uh, this application. Uh, the, uh, we'll take, make reference here to the site plan that's up on the screen at this point. The lot, um, as, uh, Mr. Attorney Herbst had indicated, it's a long, narrow lot. Uh, and for the purposes of this, the north is kind of up slightly to the left. Uh, but for the purposes of, of our discussion tonight, I'm going to refer to, uh, the, the lot as running north-south with Mitcham Avenue obviously to the north. Uh, there's a series of buildings, four, uh, single-story buildings, uh, storage units are proposed. And there will be a single curb cut on Mitcham Avenue. Um, there will be a, a slide gate, the gate is proposed to be a aluminum picket, ornamental picket, uh, gate, very nice gate, which will cross the incline from side to side, east to west. Uh, as you turn the corner, as the property turns the corner and starts to run in the southerly direction, uh, we will be proposing a six-foot-high vinyl clad fence. Um, all the colors that we're talking about, there's not going to be any bright whites or anything, we're really looking at, uh, earth tone colors, uh, grays, beige, uh, light browns, uh, and the like. And that, that also goes for the buildings themselves. The drive, the main drive-in, uh, is two-way traffic, twenty-four foot wide. You've got units to the right and to the left of you as you command. You can travel two-way all the way down from the, from the north all the way to the south. There are parking spaces, there are five parking spaces proposed as shown in the plan. However, one of the spaces we were requested to convert to a handicap space, a van-accessible space, and in doing so, uh, the parking count will drop to three. Um, uh, while that is, uh, less than the zoning regs would require, uh, the amount of cars that were anticipated and those that would be in there at any one given time, uh, this, the, uh, town, the city planner has agreed that, uh, that they would not, that this, uh, would not require the, the total number that otherwise would be expected on this lot. There, as you hit the bottom or to the south, and then you, there's a one-way loop drive, uh, that would get, get you around the bottom and then back up the left-hand side as you move up, back up to the north. Uh, the project satisfies all dimensional criteria for the zone with one exception, and, uh, Ryan McAvoy will address that this evening as well. In terms of landscaping, um, the only landscaping that's proposed is, uh, right up front on Mon Mitcham Avenue. Uh, there are two Princeton elm trees that are posed on either side, is, uh, where the, uh, the cursor was just showing. Uh, there's a mix of evergreen, uh, perennials, and ornamental brasses. We have been requested to substitute some material that's proposed for more native material, and we are happy to do so. The only lighting that's proposed is low-bottle, uh, building-mounted full cutoff lighting. So this is going to be a relatively low, uh, uh, generator of, of illumination, so there's really going to be, uh, for a photometric plan, uh, we have zero, uh, zero, uh, light, uh, along the property line that's being proposed. Uh, the last thing that I would mention before introducing Ryan is that the site is very, very flat. Uh, all buildings are, um, proposed at the same elevation, six-twenty-six. The drainage, uh, water will be, uh, will flow to the center of the dry lines and, uh, move from north to south with a discharge in the southerly direction. At this point, I want to turn the presentation over to Ryan McAvoy, a professional engineer.
Thank you, Dave, for the record, my name is Ryan McAvoy, I'm a list professional engineer with S L R. And the site, as Dave mentioned, is quite flat today, uh, in fact, it's mostly overgrown vegetation primarily. Uh, and the majority of the site drains presently today to the, uh, southeast towards the, uh, future Sonic Restaurant, and then eventually to the west brain, west, um, west, uh, branch of the Malikat River. And if you could, thank you, this, uh, the G R sheet, a G R sheet would be fine. So what, what we have, again, is a very, a very flat, undulating, um, site with, uh, low points in between some of the buildings. We're collecting all the runoff from the proposed impervious surfaces, including buildings and parking, and directing, directing them to the, uh, southeast corner towards underground infiltration areas. And what those infiltration areas will do is, uh, is allow for the stormwater to collect within them and into the underground, uh, native soils, which consist of sandy gravel, highly permeable soils. Uh, and then the overflow, uh, from that system will, uh, simply, uh, be directed to the southeast, uh, off the site, as what enough currently does today. Uh, what's interesting about the properties to the west, uh, there is, they generally drain towards this property, all those properties somewhat elevated for the properties to the west, so we are collecting runoff at the property boundary on the west side or the left side of your sheet here, as you see it. And allowing that to be conveyed around the proposed buildings and discharge in a similar manner to our proposed drainage system to the southeast. So that will help to alleviate any pounding that may occur today, um, on the neighboring properties. Again, as I mentioned, the soils here are highly permeable, we did conduct test pits to verify the soil conditions. And, um, and we designed our system in accordance with, uh, applicable state, uh, guidance for, uh, infiltration style, uh, systems. In terms of zoning regulations and zoning, uh, uh, data compliance, our, our property for the self-storage will meet, uh, the requirements of the zone. Uh, there, the, in order to meet the, uh, impervious ratio coverage, uh, we do have a small portion of the southeast corner of the site, which will have porous asphalt to achieve the maximum seventy-five percent ratio. And we did have discussions with staff about the resulting land that will remain with the residential property, uh, the smaller residential property to the, uh, west, I gave the cursor. Um, we had sort of, uh, misinterpreted, perhaps, what the requirements are for impervious ratios of that piece. So there is a fairly decent-sized gravel parking area to the rear of the site. And in order to bring the remaining land of that lot into compliance with the regulations for coverage, uh, we will have to convert, uh, a portion of that gravel, uh, parking to either, um, porous asphalt or concrete papers that infiltrate, allow for infiltration into the underlying soil. Uh, that's certainly something, uh, that, you know, we talked about, Jeremy, today, we're happy to include as a condition, it's a relatively minor amount, six-hundred-and-fifty feet, uh, will bring us into compliance with the regulations in terms of impervious ratio. Uh, sediment erosion control on this site, it's going to be handled, uh, through directing, um, site runoff through diversion swales, uh, to a sediment, um, a sediment trap which will allow for settling of soils and settling of any solids within the, um, within the runoff before it exits the property onto neighboring sites to the south and east. Um, given the underlying permeability of the soils, I don't expect there's going to be a major issue with sediment, uh, on this site, it should be able to be built relatively quickly, but, uh, we do have to follow the guidance of the two thousand and two, um, guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control, um, put out by the state D E E P. So, um, that's a, a quick overview of our drainage of our site, um, sediment erosion control plan, and, uh, how we comply or can comply with the regulations. Um, if there's any questions that you may have of me regarding the drainage or drainage plan, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, any questions you may have about the landscaping fence and things of that sort, I would of course defer to Dave, so.
What is, what is the height of the buildings? For all part? All part fourteen feet, thirteen?
Thirteen, fourteen feet, uh, for those who are listening online.
I see, I see in the, uh, final lot, prepared for times to comfort control self-storage facility. Are these conditioned space units or not?
No.
So just dry?
Yes.
Unheated, uncabled space?
No water, no sand area. There's no office space, there's no, there's no, um, the meaning for sand area, so it's surface.
So I don't know if it came up, and, uh, I may have just missed it, but you are gonna, you're gonna be doing a lot of revision to these properties?
Yes, yeah, so, so we are sliding the, um, you just seen property lines for the residential piece is roughly where my pen is shown. And the lot will be relocated to the north. The resulting lot area for the residential piece, setbacks, all those, uh, zoning criteria will be met with this lot line revision. The only thing, as I mentioned before, that we missed was the impervious surface ratio, which can be met, uh, with relatively simple, straightforward site plan revisions to the existing gravel parking area to the rear of the house. And any improvements we make to that, to that end, we will improve any drainage runoff conditions from that, from that property.
Any questions, have any comments or questions at this point?
So it's all going to be gravel?
It's mostly going to be standard asphalt, the rear corner where we do have our, uh, underground infiltration system will consist of porous asphalt. But the majority of it will be standard.
We might have discussed with the city engineer, and we're in agreement that we could do, redo the porous asphalt to meet our, our previous, um, area standards. Anyone else at this point?
It's, they're all divided within the, like, the basic storage, with different sizes available.
They all have ex, external access, so they'll be, you know, cars will just pull right up to their unit, open the garage door, let's, we'll go to their business and be in there most likely.
There's not, uh, two, I think it's necessary to require, uh, one is fine? No, in the actual development, uh, one way in and one way out, so that's just how it is, Jeremy?
Yeah, you might want to just explain the traffic situation.
No, I'm just saying, if we're like for fire, emergency vehicles, that's always, it's always fine, just to have one way in and one way out?
Yeah, there's a, there's a requirement, and fire, fire, I mean, when everybody, no, when fire, it's just too. Anyone else? All right, Jeremy?
All right, I, I have a quick question, so. Uh, one quick question, when you, when you, uh, talk about the three parking spaces available and, and plus one handicap is, um, does that mean that no more than three, uh, customers or, uh, storage renters could, could be on the property at the same time, or is it, that's in addition to the drive-up access that you mentioned?
I, in our experience with these self-storage facilities, uh, no one actually physically uses the available parking outside. They typically drive right up to their unit, park right in front of their, the door to their unit, open it up and bring in, take out whatever items they wish to take out, and, and then they exit the site. So I don't expect that those parking spaces will be, um, widely used.
Thank you.
There's no outside use of, in, within this development, like, campers or trailers or anything like that?
Uh.
Really, now some passive stuff?
Sorry.
Sorry, once you, but you're my home. Pinrow Associates LLC has filed an application for property at eight-eighty-seven and eight-ninety-five Mitcham Avenue. Tax assessment map two-twenty-two, block zero-zero-five, block zero-three-five and zero-one-seven for construction of a self-storage facility and associated site improvements. The properties are owned by Pinrow Associates LLC. Are zero-point-seven-three and zero-point-two-five acres in the area respectively, and are located in the L V, local business zone. Eight-eighty-seven Mitcham Avenue is a vacant lot, and eight-ninety-five Mitcham Avenue contains an existing three-family dwelling. With the intent of the applicant to con, to conduct a boundary line revision to transfer a portion of the land from eight-ninety-five Mitcham Avenue to eight-eighty-seven Mitcham Avenue for the proposed self-storage facility. The proposed self-storage facility is allowed by special exception site claim approval in the local business zone under zoning regulations, section three-point-one, table permitted uses subsection nine-point-three-two, self-storage warehouse units. There are four proposed self-storage buildings on the site totaling thirteen thousand nine-hundred-seventy-five square feet and ninety-nine individual units of varying sizes. A previous site plan approval, number ten-thirty-eight, was granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission for commercial buildings at eight-eighty-seven Mitcham Avenue on May eleventh, twenty-twelve, and has inspired. Plans submitted are titled, proposed self-storage units, eight-ninety-five Mitcham Avenue, Torrance, Connecticut. Regulatory submission by S L R, Cheshire, Connecticut. Dated September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, ten sheets. Also included is a drainage report dated October third, twenty-twenty-two. Staff has met previously with the property owner's representative and engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note, zoning table appears to have a misprint in the proposed provided column for the proposed percent building coverage for both properties. The applicant should be prepared to state on the record at the public hearing, the proposed building coverage for both parcels and the updated cover sheet, great rare mention of them. Uh, number two, an undeveloped portion of Gardenhurst Avenue that runs through the property was abandoned by the city in nineteen eighty-six. Number three, the requirement for parking on-site is ten parking spaces, including at least one van-accessible handicap space based on the proposed unit count of ninety-nine units, uh, one for ten days. The applicant has proposed five parking spaces, there are no handicap parking spaces proposed. The applicant is required to convert two of the existing, existing spaces to a van-accessible handicap space and correct the drawings to conform to the regulations, leaving four, four spaces provided. Since the proposed use is for, for the site is self-storage with minimal need for parking and in favor of allowing a reduction in the minimum parking requirements under section five-point-thirteen-point-four, point B, to four spaces, including the required van-accessible handicap space. Number four, parking requirements and parking reduction information should be added to the zoning table on the title sheet. Other staff comments, Nate Nardi Cyrus, assistant city planner, an email to be dated September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are regulated water courses in the vicinity of the subject property that require wetland review for this proposal. The applicant submitted a wetland permit application on nine fifteen twenty-two with the permit A B twenty-two oh nine oh two, set to be issued on ten six twenty-two. This constitutes a favorable, a favorable weapons report for this application. Landscaping, the landscaping plan, page four of the site plan meets the specifications of five-point-one-one of the zoning regulations. Planted shrubs described in the plan must be a minimum of eighteen inches in height. It is recommended that the applicant replace non-native species with native alternatives, I'm not going to read them all, uh. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting was applied in section five-point-one-seven of the city zoning code, including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs approved as part of this application. A sign permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five-point-one-five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the conservation commission for review and comments. Architectural review committee, this project, this project was reviewed, was reviewed by the A R C at a meeting on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. The committee was generally in support of the aesthetics of the project with the following suggested changes and updates to the plans. One, landing, uh, one landscaping substitutes as suggested by. One, landing, one landscaping substitutes as suggested by Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. Two, tan-colored vinyl fencing on the side property lines to match the tones of the proposed buildings. Fencing to the rear of the property can be changed. Three, address number on both the outside of the building facing the street and mounted to the outside gate. Four, signage to match the basic design of the previous project by this applicant at four fifty-six South Main Street. Five, proposed sidewalks have now been added to the plans. Six, if signage lighting is proposed, it should be soft lighting to comply with dark sky recommendations. And not be a distraction of passing traffic. Engineer, engineering, Paul Conson, city engineer, an email to be dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Submitted the final plans with markups and indicated the following. My comments are in the attached, most are minor and can be addressed with revisions prior to construction. Police traffic, police traffic sergeant Dustin Waldis, an email to be dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. Only thought, is there any consideration about sidewalk in this area? As it may draw more and consider down the line continuing to perform school area, other than that, I have nothing further. Fire, fire marshal Edward Paseta, in an letter to be dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments on plans. The building should be equipped with complete and compliant fire protection system compatible with changing use. The fact it will be vacant during non-business hours makes it a prime candidate for the delayed discovery of a fire inside. For it to make use of lock boxes to allow quick access by firefighters in time for an alarm without causing damage. If not already in existence, a lock box should be installed on the exterior of the building through the main door. The fire department will use a secure master key to open the box and allow the building owner to leave appropriate building access keys inside. This eliminates any delay in entering the building or waiting for a key holder to arrive in the middle of the night. The building and area must comply with all required building and electrical codes. And will be inspected by the fire marshal for compliance with the life safety code. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and annually thereafter. W P C A, Mary Paradi, W P C A Administrator Assistant. In an email to be dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, stated that W P C A has no comments on the plans. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, in an email to be dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. Please provide the following information as applicable, applying for the required permits. Complete sets of I B C section one oh seven required construction documents as applicable. Prepared by a registered design professional for all work being performed. Complete mechanical and electrical plans. Complete plan for accessibility, including parks, parking and passenger loading facilities. Subject to review and onsite correction. It shall be the duty of the permit holder or their agent to notify the building official that such work is ready for inspection. Conclusion, I recommend approval of special exception number twenty-two dash zero seven. And site plan number fourteen twenty-two, eighteen eighty-seven, eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five Michigan Avenue. For construction of a self-storage facility and associated site improvements with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall, shall complete the proposed lot line revision between eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five Michigan Avenue. Properties and submit documents to the city planner prior to issuance of zoning permits to begin construction. Two, the applicant shall update zoning table with appropriate calculations for proposed building coverage and parking table. Three, the applicant shall update the final plans to show a banned accessible handicap parking space. Four, the minimum parking requirements of ten parking spaces for self-storage units shall be waived to allow four parking spaces on-site. And according to section five point one three point four point B of the regulations. Five, the applicant shall update final plans to show sidewalks fronting both subject properties. Six, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. In his September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner specifically regarding landscaping. Seven, the applicant shall follow the advice of the architectural review committee from their October twenty, twenty twenty-two meeting summarized in this memo. Eight, the applicant shall follow the procedure for building permits as outlined by Building Official Kevin Gillette, in his October twelfth, twenty twenty-two memo. Nine, the applicant shall follow the requirements outlined by Fire Marshal Edward Paseta, contained in his October twelfth, twenty twenty-two letter to the city planner. Ten, the applicant shall address minor corrections to the plans identified by Paul Conson, the city engineer. And his October fourteen, twenty twenty-two markup prior to filing of the final plans. Eleven, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Waldis. With respect to the construction of sidewalks in accordance with section five point thirteen point three point K of the zoning regulations. In his October sixteen, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner, final plans shall be updated to show proposed sidewalk location. Twelve, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full group plans with corrections. And including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page and sheet G R grading in utilities. B, one Mylar copy of the final site plan grading in utility sheet, sheet G R. For filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear the chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal and lighting stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to approval of the zoning permits to begin construction. And then I added one final one again written, add requirements for acceptable low-impact development practice. To add previous area to the house lot. Thank you, Jeremy, do you have any questions, have any comments?
So regarding the storage. How do you regulate what storage is storage, you, what do you regulate? We're fighting over who's gonna answer that question.
There, there really isn't any, any. Guidance in terms of what they can store in the, in the unit from their owner's perspective too.
So as an owner of the storage facility, you don't know what each individual who's renting the space is putting in.
Generally not, no.
Right, so my concern is the fire marshal didn't say anything. But if there's volatile stuff being stored, the fire department is under risk. If there's a fire, the reason I bring it up is that in a normal industrial environment, we have to identify. All of our volatile chemicals and gases and fuels and such, we have to submit that, add that, that to the fire department. So that the fire marshal knows when they arrive where the volatile areas are.
I, 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 I don't know this for certain, but I don't know if Davey fit something to add, but.
No.
Generally speaking, there are limitations that the owners can impose on the, on the, on the tenants, for lack of a better term, that they do not store explosives. But in terms of inspection as to what they store, I don't know that the owners typically go through that exercise.
Well, you know, units large enough to guard, right, there's something like twenty units here?
They won't, they won't have the ability to get a car in there, because they're.
I mean, typical outdoor road, you know, gas. Propane tank could be in there. My only question is, I bring it up for the reason of safety. From the standpoint of a fire department arriving and being completely unknowing what's in each and every one of those storage containers. They just have no idea what might happen. If it's nothing, it's nothing, and if there's a container of. You know, propane gas, it could be very.
Yeah, I, I guess I could piggyback on that, Peter, do you know, I don't know if you're representative of the, the same applicants on the South Main Street application. Do you know if they have, you know, they usually have individual contracts you have to sign when you rent the unit? Do you know if they have language in those contracts?
I did represent the applicant on South Main Street, but I did not get involved in the business aspects of operating the facility, so I don't really answer that question.
Yeah, you normally, I've heard of these units before, and there's, there's a contract that nobody ever reads, that, that you sign when you're selling to the unit, but. Maybe there's something in there that outlines what you can, can't store.
I, I, I can't imagine that, that as part of the contract, that there is a black and white limitations as to what they are allowed to use and store. In these facilities, and the fire marshal has reviewed the plans. With, with minimal comments relative to that, because obviously those types of things could always occur. And, and anyone could certainly violate the, the level of the contract, but that's kind of out of our control at this point.
Well, in the case of that, if you have a stipulation that someone would ignore it or violate it, then they're liable. I mean, it's why, I'm just bringing it up because, you know, maybe today, and in the past, we hadn't thought about it. But I've begun to think about that as a potential liability to our city workers who have to fight a fire.
I would, I would also imagine that the, that, that any storage of certain types of materials, like fireworks or explosives. May violate the law as well, so you might still get to.
I mean, all I'm trying to get at is. There's no, there is nothing available to us to address the situation unless you were create some kind of a business contract. That had, at least the restricted. And I would encourage you to do that because it's a life safety issue for the fire department. Even if, if Paseta didn't say anything about it, maybe I'll mention it then, because I think he should be thinking things like that. Uncontrolled storage or unregulated storage just opens up a fair amount of risk. Never, I've not seen it ever happen, but. We have not seen lots of things happen.
We will, Mr. Peresito, we will certainly share your concern with our client.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, have any comments? Go to the public, anyone like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Nick White Way, I live at two eighteen East stomach Street. And just to piggyback off of what they were just saying there, I've done, I've been a part of building and construction of. Multiple units like they're talking about, a lot of them had sprinkler systems inside. So I think all the ones that I was a part of, so I don't know if that's part of the plan. And also, the storage unit up by Star Bus up there, or whatever. I was looking to store a car at one point, and they had units that could fit my car in it, and I was asking about it, like, oh, no, absolutely not, that violates the contract. Because the car contains fuel, not because of anything else, so that's all I'm gonna say, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward and state your name and address for the record? Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward and state your name and address for the record? Any other, commissioners have any other comments or questions?
No.
Time's eight twenty-six, the clearance public hearing closed.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve special exception twenty-two dash zero seven, the site plan fourteen twenty-two. Applicant Inboro Associates LLC, location eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five Michigan Avenue. Proposal new construction of self-storage units, the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall complete the proposed lot line revision between eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five Michigan Avenue properties. And submit documents to the city planner prior to the issuance of zoning permits to begin construction. Two, the applicant shall update the zoning table with appropriate calculations for proposed building coverage and parking table. Three, the applicant shall update final plans to show a banned accessible handicap parking space. Four, the minimum parking requirements of ten parking spaces for self-storage units. Shall be waived to allow four parking spaces on-site in accordance with section five point one three point four point B of the regulations. Five, the applicant shall update final plans to show sidewalks fronting both subject properties. Six, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant, Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. In his September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner specifically regarding landscaping. Seven, the applicant shall follow the advice of the architectural review committee from their October twenty, twenty twenty-two meeting summarized in this memo. Eight, the applicant shall follow the procedure for building permits as outlined by Building Official Kevin Gillette, in his October twelfth, twenty twenty-two memo. Nine, the applicant shall follow the requirements outlined by Fire Marshal Edward Paseta contained in his October twelve, twenty twenty-two letter to the city planner. Ten, the applicant shall address minor corrections to the plans identified by Paul Conson, the city engineer. In his October fourteen, twenty twenty-two markup prior to filing the final plans. Eleven, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Waldis. With respect to construction of sidewalks in accordance with city five point one three point three point K of the zoning regulations. In his October sixteen, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Final plans shall be updated to show the proposed sidewalk location. Twelve, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plan with corrections and including the engineer's stamp and the chairman's signature box on the title page. And sheet G R grading in utilities. B, one Mylar copy of the final site plan grading in utility sheet, sheet G R for filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal and lighting stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Same. And also. So I guess I'll just, it's my, add a requirement for unacceptable low-impact development practice to add previous areas to the whole lot, to the house lot. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Time thirty, moment at the end, item number four D, proposed zone map change, applicant Florence T-Ball. Location six zero one South Main Street, both will change zones at L B, local business. Currently R six, serving on a commission ceiling, it's Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Brett Peresino, Starly Ayres. Donovan Riley, Tom Tomlin, myself, Brad Millie, also, and that's our city planner, Jeremy Leifer. Commissioner Greco, leave him alone, please.
Planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following applications on Wednesday. October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, in the city hall auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty, Main Street, Torrenton, Connecticut. D, proposed zone map change, applicant Florence T-Ball, location six zero one South Main Street. Proposal change zone to L B, local business for R six, time of hearing immediately following the closing of the third public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Greco, there's the applicant, have any comments, please?
Hi, my name's Florence T-Ball, owner of six oh one South Main Street LLC. I'm here tonight to request a zone change from residential. Which got changed back in the nineteen nineties somehow or another from local business to residential, I would like it back to local business.
Okay, did you have the names?
You guys saw everything.
You mentioned it was changed back in the nineties.
Yep, it was, local business, got changed to residential, I want it back to local business.
And this is where A C Z areas was? Yeah, so this came up, and then I'll read it kind of later after, but this, this came up initially because there's some, some tenants base that, that. They want to change around on the property, and, I mean, it's, it's obviously a commercial property. With its own R six, every single time they want to make a huge change, and then they have to come to a special exception, which makes no sense to me at all. So we're, we're, you know, I, I recommended that she come in and do this, do this zone change to make. Make everything easier when, when tenants switch around or anything like that. Why don't you go ahead and read your. Yeah. Florence T-Ball, D V A, six oh one South Main Street LLC has submitted an application. To propose a zone map change from the current R six residential zoning to an L B local business zone. For property located at six oh one South Main Street, sensors map one fifteen, block zero two zero, block zero one zero. The property is twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty square feet, and a half acre in area. The property is currently owned by six oh one South Main Street LLC, the property is serviced by public sewer and public water. The applicant has submitted a class A two survey titled zoning location survey prepared for six oh one South Main Street LLC. South Main Street and Palmer Bridge Street, Torrenton, Connecticut, dated June twenty twenty-two, one sheet. And a five hundred foot vicinity map titled zoning location survey, prepared to show parcel proposed to be changed from R six. To local, to, to zone local business, South Main Street and Palmer Bridge Street, Torrenton, Torrenton, Connecticut, dated June twenty twenty-two, one sheet. Torrenton, Torrenton, Connecticut, dated June twenty twenty two, one sheet. Prepared by Timothy G Wiley Jr., Land Surveyor, Arkansas, Connecticut. The maps conform to the zoning map requirements of section eight point seven point one for proposed change in zoning in a zoning district boundary. The subject property is adjacent to property zone local business, immediately to the north of this property. Across Palmer Bridge Street, it would add a small contiguous cluster of LB zone parcels at the intersection of South Main Street and Palmer Bridge Street. The property is surrounded on the east and south by R six residential zoning. And to the west across South Main Street by industrial zoning. This property, this property currently contains a mix of offices, shops, and a restaurant, and is adjacent to properties. With uses such as automotive shops and various industrial uses along South Main Street. In reviewing the application and map submitted, I have the following comments. One, the property currently houses a restaurant and office space. Two, the change in zone to LB would cause all existing uses in the building on the property to conform as as of right uses. Rather than special exception uses and is compatible with the uses in the immediate area. Three, the current structures on-site are compliant with all setback and other bulk regulations, except for the front yard setbacks on both street frontages. However, this proposed change of zone would make the existing building less non-conforming. As the LB zone requires a ten-foot front yard setback, while the R six zone requires a twenty five foot front yard setback. Four, this property would share the northern property boundary with a contiguous cluster of LB zone parcels extending north along South Main Street. This proposed zone change does not represent a spot zoning. Five, according to a review of the zoning history on this property, it was previously zoned local business through the mid nineteen nineties. City-initiated zoning changes in neighborhoods from South Main Street east of the Knott's Tuck River. Appear to have captured this property and rezoned it to R six residential. While these collective changes make sense in in the interior residential neighborhoods. I believe properties running South Main Street should remain in commercial and industrial zoning when feasible. Six, the zone change would further the overall rules of the Business Development Section of the twenty nineteen Torrenton Plan. Conservation and Development in section eight point two, which states maintain the basic character. And quality of life of the city of Torrenton with suitable mix of residential, commercial, agricultural, and industrial zone property. While continuing to provide a mix of residential property. In my opinion, this requested zone change would further the overall goals of the P O C D. Other staff comments? Economic Development Director, Rista Malanka, AICP, did not comment on this application. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, in an email to be dated August twenty second, twenty twenty two, offered the following comments. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or water courses on or in the vicinity of the subject property that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, no additional landscaping is proposed or recommended as part of this application. Lighting, no lighting additions or removals are proposed or recommended as part of this application. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. A shine, a sign permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review and comment. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Vaseta, in an email to be dated August eighteen, twenty twenty two, stated. Hi, I don't have anything at this time. When and if they make changes to the building itself, I'm sure I'll be more involved. WPCA, Mary Maradi, WPCA Administrator Assistant, in an email to me dated August twenty third, twenty twenty two. Stated that WPCA had no comments on the application. Engineering, city engineer Paul Hudson, sent an email to me dated August twenty second, twenty twenty two, stated that he has no comments on the proposed zone change. Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Waldis, in an email to me dated August seventeen, twenty twenty two, stated. My only comment is more towards parking on this zone change. There needs to be a more established parking area and parking in front of the restaurant is not an option. It creates large sightline issues from Palmer Bridge Street and there should be adequate parking already on in the lot. Other than that, no further comment. Thank you. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, in an email to me dated August thirty, twenty twenty two, stated that he has no comments on his application. Conclusion, the proposed zone change was discussed with the mayor and city staff on September twelfth, twenty twenty two, land use staff meeting. And no objections or concerns to the proposed zone change were voiced. The Connecticut General Statutes requires the commission, when making a decision on a zone change. To take and consider the plan of conservation and development prepared pursuant to CGS eight dash twenty three. In my opinion, the commission may make a finding that the proposed zone change is in accordance with the goals and recommendations. Of the twenty nineteen Torrenton Plan for Conservation and Development. I recommend approval of the requested zone change from R six residential to LB local business. With the effective date, the day after publication of the approval.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any questions, have any comments? Public, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And, um, yeah, it's time's eight thirty nine. The cleared public hearing closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve proposed zone map change applicant Florence Tivo. Location six zero one South Main Street, proposal change zone to LB local business currently R six. The commission finds the proposal to be consistent with the city of Torrenton's plan of conservation and development. The effective date of the zone change shall be the day after publication of legal notice of disuse in a local newspaper. Sorry, guys.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is in favor. Moving on to item number five, local business A, site plan application fourteen twenty one, applicant fifth street, so we can sell LLC location. Fifteen sixty five East Main Street, proposal site plan slash change of use from former auto storage lot to retail storage shut sale. This application has been withdrawn. We're going to, sorry, I'm just going to tell you, I I received a communication from the applicant. An email that went through the applications, I put it in the file. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, B, site plan, application fourteen twenty three, applicant Ryan Batchelder. Location ten fifty East Main Street, proposal site plan slash change of use of a portion of the property for single family use to carry out food service. And vehicle storage use. Is the applicant in attendance for this?
Ryan Batchelder?
The address, please.
Uh, ninety two Roland Street.
Thank you.
Well.
Uh, keep by both by one engineering survey representative, I am in this. Uh, closing area in front of the lot for this food truck. Uh, coffee truck that he has and picking area, picknick tables, uh, for this time. There's currently, the previous use was the plant depot, which had parking along Hartford Avenue. We're planning to continue to use some of that parking space, uh, to service the food truck. Um, and install gravel pad in the back part of the lot. For parking of like it's, uh, the trailer and things like that that he uses as part of the coffee business. Commercial storage. As I said, the previous had had the plant depot had been, had buildings that are all along this whole strip here.
The building is gone.
Building is gone. So it's all crap now, what the building used to be. So using the same parking and just putting a gravel pad and some picknick tables on for the the food truck.
And it's where you already operate out?
Where it's a current operating out of this. There's a residential area to the south here. Uh, we have a twenty five foot bumper, currently all trees in that area. Those will stay, the trees, I will stay there. We're not changing that at all.
Move on the, uh, the west side of that gravel.
Over here?
Well, where the trees are, where the residential, yeah, that right there, that back side of it.
Yeah, the trees, there's just some, there's some shrubs along that fence line, yes, as you say. That's along the gas station parking lot right there.
Existing houses part of it.
Existing houses saying.
And what is it used for?
It's going to be a residential.
Yeah.
It's a residential.
Yeah.
The gravel pad, is that anything special?
No.
Just gravel.
Just gravel.
Like millions.
Millions.
Yeah.
Or asphalt, maybe, we would consider.
How many vehicles are going to be stored on this?
Uh, like my trailer, so I have the coffee truck that we operate out of, which typically stays towards the front, East Main Street side there. Yep, and, um, I have a trailer that we use for mobile events and stuff. We've used downtown here for like car shows and stuff. And, yep, fairs and stuff like that. So that typically stays parked in the back of the lot and I keep. Uh, my truck back there that I use to tow the trailer with. And another personal vehicle of mine I typically keep back there as well.
So the food, the actual food truck is not going to be moved within that site, right?
It 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 does move because I do have to, I I move it every day, actually, when I put water in it. And and empty out, um, water. So it it does technically move every day, but, um.
But the hours that you do business out of it, it stays there.
Correct.
It's not going to be moved.
Correct.
Anywhere else on that.
Yep.
Parcel.
I mean, sometimes maybe a possible change of aesthetic, you know, switch it a different direction, maybe kind of switch things up in that, you know, sort of aspect once in a while, but. You know, all of that.
So the problem of parking is for people to drive and park their cars and get out?
No, so there's existing paved parking where those spots are.
Right along. That's where you want them to park.
Right, correct. The gravel pad is just picknick tables and the.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just like, you know, kind of like how Kirk Hot Dogs has his little spot where like gravel or they.
Yeah, it's not intended for parking.
Correct, correct. And I have, you know, I have I have a little fence there that I installed with our, you know, proper setback from. Hartford Avenue and such, um. I I did, you know, we do have bushes and shrubs shown on this revised site plan. Um, I would like to ask for a little leniency on the amount of of bushes, just because. I would like people to see my business, you know, as they're kind of driving by, you know, and. I don't want it to be hidden. That's that's my fear that, you know, people are going to be traveling up the hill and and may not see. My business, you know.
Only sign that you saw.
What's that?
Your only sign that you saw in the truck.
Correct, correct. And, you know, with the setbacks and stuff. It it, you know, may take your eye off of what's behind the bushes and stuff, because like, you know, you got like O'Reilly Auto Parts, it's right there, you know. They don't have a single bush, you know, for in front of their property there and. I I am asking for some leniency in that if, you know, you guys could find. The requirements are a lot for considering how little space we have to fit them in.
And you don't love parking in that driveway of that house for the business?
No, absolutely not.
Your truck with the generators are parked on the road or is that in that?
It is in the parking lot now. Um, I do.
It was on the road.
Correct, correct. Well, it it technically, because in in some of the res- revised, um. You know, notes in in the email, I think that you may all have, um, dated. It's dated today, October twenty sixth, what it says, Planning and Zoning Commission, it says, there's there's talk of a maybe curb. Being, you know, put in there so that people don't park on the Hartford Avenue. Side of the street, um, you know, if there was an issue, maybe we could just. Put some no parking signs so that people wouldn't park there on the side of the road.
Gravel pad, the truck is parked is pretty much the same grade as the road, like there's no curb, I mean, it's.
Correct, it is, it is, it is a slight bit higher than the road, but not, not much, but that's why I installed the. The split rail fence, you know. Entire area was gravel.
Right.
Under the plant depot, this whole thing was all the way out to east, made pretty much was all gravel.
Just out of curiosity, what do you sell under the truck?
Coffee.
Just coffee.
Just coffee. We don't even have food on, I have a class one food permit, um, you know. We don't even have prepackaged food, you know, we we literally have, you know, hot coffee, iced coffee, lattes and that kind of thing.
Uh, Ryan Batchelder, property owner, has filed an application for property at ten fifty East Main Street. Tax accessory map one thirty three, block zero zero six, lot zero four zero. To change the use of the property from a previous commercial greenhouse use to a drive-in and carry-out food service use. And commercial vehicle storage use. The applicant also proposes to create two improved gravel pads. One for parking of a food, a food truck and picking tables on the western side of the property, nearest to East Main Street. And another to store commercial vehicles on the eastern side of the property. Exiting, I should say, existing parking spaces from previous approvals along Hartford Avenue are proposed to be used. The property is owned by Ryan Batchelder, the grand bachelor in Dong Sang Ramos. Is zero point four one acres in area and is located in the LB local business zone. A previous site plan approval under application number seven thirty one was approved on September fourteen, two thousand and five. For a commercial greenhouse and was modified under application number eight five seven on September twelve, two thousand and seven, and has expired. There is also a single-family dwelling located on the property which will continue to be used for that purpose. The drive-in and carry-out food service use is a conforming use by cycling approval in the LB zone. Under zoning regulations, section three point one, table of permitted uses subsection seven point four zero. The commercial vehicle storage use is a conforming use by cycling approval in the LB zone. Under zoning regulations, section three point one, table of permitted uses, section nine point four zero. A new site plan approval is required for these proposed changes of use. Plans submitted are titled, are titled, site plan, ten fifty East Main Street, Torrenton, Connecticut. Map one three three, block zero zero six, lot zero four zero. Prepared for Ryan Batchelder, ten fifty East Main Street, Torrenton, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero. By Auto Engineering and Surveying LLC, West Cornwall, Connecticut. Dated September twenty twenty two, one sheet. Staff has previously met with the property owners to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, there are no proposed sidewalks on the plans. A sidewalk will be required along East Main Street in accordance with section five point one, three point three point K of the zoning regulation. Regulations as a condition of approval. Two, the commission should review comments from the city engineer and traffic sergeant. And and discuss requirement changes to parking orientation. The current orientation has been identified as a safety issue. However, the parking is in a pre-existing location and has been slightly reduced. Other staff comments, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. In an email to be dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or water courses on or in the vicinity of the subject property that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, landscaping along East Main Street and Hartford Avenue shall include trees and shrubs required by section five point one one. Of the zoning code. The right-of-way along East Main Street and Hartford Avenue and the ten-foot front setbacks must be established as grass. Lighting, no lighting additions or removals are proposed or recommended as part of this application. Signage, add truck with large A-frame signage to the site plan and situate outside the DOT right-of-way and ten-foot backyard setback. A sign permit shall be required for the sign or any other signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review and comment. Architecture Review Committee, this project will not require A R C review. Engineering, Paul Hudson, city engineer, in an email to me dated October eighteen, twenty twenty two, offered the following comments. The engineering department is not in favor of the existing perpendicular parking remaining as it is hazardous to back out onto street in into street traffic. Especially in close proximity to the intersection of East Main Street. It is suggested that self-contained parking may be made within the property. With a designated driveway access point to control traffic access at East Hartford Avenue. New six-inch, two minutes concrete curbing is to be installed along the entire frontage of Hartford Avenue to prevent short-term pickup. Pickup parallel parking within the right-of-way. See the attached markup plan with additional comments. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Waldis, in an email to me dated October eighteen, twenty twenty two, offered the following comments. In reviewing these plans, I have a couple of concerns with the property. I see that we have commercial type traffic with parking spaces backing into our city street. I see that we have a commercial type traffic with parking spaces backing into our city street near an intersection. This is not acceptable if other means can be accommodated for the space. I observed Paul's plan, which puts the spaces into a designated driveway, which appears to be more advantageous. Instead of putting people into our city right-of-way and roadway. With this being a quick stop for food and beverage, we seem to be leading to a more pedestrian type of access and ask why no sidewalk will be required. As we have a near future, a sidewalk plan for the north side of East Main Street. By having sidewalk on the south side, it allows for access for the pedestrian bicycle traffic and provide for safety away from East Main Street. These are my only comments, I hope this was all the plans that I missed, thank you. Fire, fire marshal at Word Maseta, in an email to me dated October twelve, twenty twenty two, indicated that he has no comments on his property. W P C A, Mary Karate, W P C A administrative assistant, in an email to me dated September twenty six, twenty twenty two. Indicated there are no comments from W P C A in this application. Building, the building department offered no comments on these plans. Conclusion, I recommend approval of site plan number fourteen twenty three, ten fifty East Main Street. For a site plan and change of use from previous commercial greenhouse use. To drive-in and carry-out food and service use and commercial vehicle storage with the following conditions and recommendations. Final one, final plans shall include a sidewalk along East Main Street in accordance with section. Five point thirteen point three point K of the zoning regulations. Two, the applicant shall file comments of Paul Hudson, city engineer, with respect to parking alignment and access management along Hartford Avenue. Outlined in his October eighteen, twenty twenty two email to the city planner. Three, the applicant shall file the advice of police traffic sergeant Dustin Walvis with respect to parking alignment. Access management and sidewalk installation is outlined in this October eighteen, twenty twenty two email to the city planner. Four, zoning permits are required prior to alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Five, the applicant shall contact the Torrenton Area Health District and obtain compliance with public health codes prior to approval. Of the zoning permits to perform site work or operate on site. Six, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the approved plan, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan for filing with the city clerk in accordance with. Section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear its chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the mission, an engineer's seal and a lighting stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to approval of zoning permits to be in construction. And I just, I just want to add one more thing, um, I although I added. Number two, three here about the access management and the parking, um, it is a pre-existing parking condition that they. Lowered, so um. I I basically wanted to put it in there for for commission debate, um, because.
Paul's calling for concrete curbing.
He's calling for the, for the applicants, putting concrete curbing, not that the city's gonna do it, right?
No. Basically, what we said on the site plan is what Paul is saying, he's not.
Right, but uh, you know, and I did have this conversation with Paul and with Sergeant Paul, that, you know. Under zoning, it's a pre-existing condition and it's been reduced, so we can't, we can't allow this.
This whole area before was all back out parking that time, or this area won't no longer be parking.
Yeah.
So basically what you're saying is that it's a cast-up to make it acceptable.
Yeah, in the previous, um, the previous business was backing on Hartford Avenue, yes.
And we're probably a lot more parking use in that than we will see in.
I mean, I I see the concerns, but but, you know, in in zoning regulations, it's a pre, it's a pre-existing condition. We, we, I think we are, you know, that being said, we. Are unstable ground to ask for it, ask for the change because it is a change to the site. But it's also a pre-existing condition.
Oh, we're always trying to enhance, bring it.
Closer, closer to compliance, which I believe they have at least done to a slight degree.
Yeah.
Just, that's what I just wanted to add, that is, it's, I didn't want to make the call on that, I just think the commissions did it, made it to take that one back and forth.
Pause.
Well, is it? Would it be a struggle to make the parking area where you drive in and then put three spots and three spots?
There wouldn't be enough room, you have to. This would have to expand, taking more of that grass area, you have to. You can only have a couple of slots, slots along, just like pulling in one way, um, it'd be very limited.
Cause they were talking curbing along the whole front, right?
He's, he's, he's asking for it.
He's asking for curbing in this area here, can't get people parking.
You know, personally, I think that's a good idea.
The curbing would be there.
It would hang, it would hang where the proposed parking is, but it would curve from the corner, right?
That's.
Yeah, but he has, he has a fence.
That's my thought, I have a fence there, and I mean, if, you know, not for nothing, I, you know, curbing doesn't always. You know, stop anybody from parking somewhere and, you know, my my thought is.
It strikes me, the fences adequate, I mean, curbing, if you didn't have anything else, I suppose curbing would be great.
And I I fully, I fully agree.
I see if you have a fence there, um.
People will drive with a curbing, they will drive with a fence.
That's my, that's my thought process behind that, that, you know, I think a fence is gonna deter someone a little bit more than, you know, a six-inch, six-inch sidewalk. You know, and I mean, that goes to debate with the shrubs too, my leniency that I asked for because. I have the fence there to kind of block things off so that, you know, somebody can't just.
Also the requirements because of the length of this side, unless we're talking thirty-five shrubs.
Yeah.
And we have to try to fit in this little area.
And we did have that, just for the commissions, but we had that conversation and we said. Uh perhaps just, just measure the distance kind of around that corner and calculate it, that would reduce it probably half the way.
Well, this is thirty-five.
Oh, that's just added.
Plus seven, plus seven trees.
Yeah, you, I see you look at trees sort of in center of the property, which gives you a little heart, heartbroken atmosphere there, which is kind of nice, but.
But, you know, also, does it, right, and does that take into any effect, you know, the trees that are in between my lot and the gas station? Because those trees do belong to me, they aren't on real in the site plan, but I mean, there's several extremely large trees on the other side of the property. Um, you know, so I.
We, we generally, it's a flexible regulation, so we worked with this all the time, I think the point here is to just dress up the curb.
And I get that.
Small, it could be small shrubs.
That's, you know, and I, and I get that.
Yeah. It's just a little over.
That's why my thought process with the split rail fence, I mean, I wouldn't even be opposed to doing the fence along the front of the property so that, you know, um. It, you know, just curb appeal, it looks a little different than just everybody's always got shrubs everywhere in town. You know, a a split rail fence kind of gives a little bit more of like a a down home country setting, you know.
Even something that doesn't lose its leaves like a salons or something.
And over the, you know, this is only eighty feet here, we're trying to fit thirty-five bushes in there to make the regulations, this, this.
So I agree, I think we can, we can reduce.
Can you catch your office? I mean, can it just be something to deal with?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we do that in a lot of conditions for.
That's right, that's my thing.
That's what we're understanding, is if we.
Or have to make a decision, I don't know.
If we can work with you guys on it.
I think we have to have some shrubs, but we don't need thirty-five.
Okay, no.
As far as the curbing goes, I don't see a need for the curbing, I mean, it's just, I guess if there was no fence, then the curbing might be the way to go, but. And if you got that fence there, I'd say there's no reason to have it.
Okay, no.
It might be.
In your busiest hour day, what's the amount of cars that would be there? On any, you know.
I I mean, there's, there's typically never really more than three people at a time, you know, um. It's ninety percent of our business is online ordering. So, you know, people are getting ready to leave their house for work or wherever they're going, they go on their phone, um, they order online. And their drink is ready when they get there, you know, and I mean, the people that come daily to get coffee. Are I, you know, I have an eighty percent uh customer return rate daily, so these people know, you know. They come the same time, just about every day, they, they, you know, it's, it's in their rhythm of things, all right, I'm gonna leave my house, I'm gonna order some batchy, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna pick it, it's gonna be ready. When I get there, I'm in, I'm out, I'm off to work, they go. Um.
I just don't.
I I I do have one other question, um, about, you said something about sidewalk.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what is a requirement on sidewalk, because. You know, I I'm selling coffee out of a truck, I, and and, you know, for me to to build a sidewalk.
Next to nowhere, cause the north side is where it's getting the sidewalk.
It's kind of a lot, and I I really think, you know, I'm gonna just be honest with you that. I don't have one single walk-up customer from somebody that's walking up or down the hill. You know, I I'm not trying to sound like rude or anything, but somebody that's.
In line of the grant.
Typically.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, it's.
It's gonna be built on the other stuff.
It is on the other side of the street, but we've.
We've got a policy requiring everyone on that side of the street to build them too. It it, those, we have them planned to build the entire sidewalk, but we've required everybody to to do it. The only, the only one we did not require was the, the, the gas station that they just revamped, cause that was a repaid.
That was kind of one of my things too, I was, I was gonna bring that up.
I mean, to me, and that's issue, uh, we haven't talked about it, um, but where is it crossed over?
At Hartford West Street.
Okay, yeah. So it's gonna go up the north side of East Main Street?
Believe so, I'll double check on that, but I believe so.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, on the north side, and it crosses over at Hartford West.
It's all on one side and it crosses at Hartford West, on the south side. Well, and that's, and that's part of it too, is we, before we ever had a sidewalk plan for up there, we were part of all the car dealerships to build sidewalks.
Anything else?
Here though, we're talking coffee truck, residential.
And and not for nothing, like I was saying, you know, I I don't have one single walk-up customer, most people. That are typically walking up East Main Street, most likely don't have a car.
Yeah.
And probably aren't gonna be spending five or eight dollars on a cup of coffee for me.
Yeah, but just so you know, that's really on the.
Yes.
Oh, no, fully, fully, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to sound rude by saying that, I I said that, you know.
You, you make it up, then the next time somebody uses that property.
Fully, fully, you know.
Sidewalks are for them, but it's, it's a public safety issue and access. But it's unique, because we do have a grant money, and kind of money's the one.
Yeah, it's partial residential lot that, you know, we're just putting it on a little corner.
But it is something that we have in our regulations.
Um, yeah, yeah, that's, it's, you know, the regulations, I, I don't have them exactly, I don't have it exactly in my head, I have, would be put it. It is basically like, it's, it's our decision, but it's also. Police traffic and they they can require them and they're, and they're telling me they want them, so.
I mean, is there any way that it can be?
It's a. A viable, viable.
There's a fact, there's a specific.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
And would it be across the whole lot?
Business.
Yeah, it's across the front of town, like, right.
Would it be across the whole lot, going in the residential section?
But just, no, no, just, yeah, well, if across the whole lot, we don't have East Main Street, but, yeah, not, not.
Well, I just wanted to hear your words, create, that's it's residential as far as questions and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Well, there are other residential pieces on East Main, they also have to, you know, have sidewalks, although they, they're sitting there unless they get redevelopments.
So we have, we have the ability on on parking to say, you know, you make recommendations, cause that's how our regulations read, you make recommendations, but we. Don't want to go with your recommendations, it doesn't read like that for sidewalks, it's if they're required, it's required, you know.
Is there a timeframe on that?
Well, uh, really, to, to, to be operating, it's either gotta be bonded or built.
Under or built.
Yeah. Can do with a charity bond.
What does that mean?
On sidewalks.
It's an insurance policy, it's this, it's a, essentially it says if you don't do it, then we'll act on insurance policy or nothing.
And there's like, it's usually they come up with a certain amount of time, so it could be a year, it'd be to get the sidewalks done.
Does that, that costs me money out of pocket, I'm just, I don't know how that works.
Whatever is the policy, it'd be a premium for the policy, but I don't know, I mean, you'd have to contact, or be here, insurance agent or something.
Right, so I would. Explain one more time for me, I'm sorry.
You'd have to build the sidewalks eventually, you just wouldn't have to do it right away, there'd be a timeframe.
Okay.
You pour like a four bud, four square every six months.
Keep, keep trading them out for new ones?
Well, I guess it's ten grand at least, it's a minimum. I mean, that would turn a premium.
You know, that's a lot of cups of coffee on my end, I just, you know. I'm, I'm born and raised in this town, I'm trying to make it, you know, I own more than one piece of property here and, um, you know. I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon and, you know, a sidewalk is just. A lot for me, for sure, and. I definitely would like to, you know, I mean, it's required as per zoning change, right, typically, that's what the.
Yeah, any, uh, you know, any, especially along the state roads, especially East Main Street.
So like, how about south Main Street, like?
Somebody makes an improvement to a site.
Well, the zoning change that just happened right before me for south Main Street had no sidewalk proposal, that's why.
They have same sidewalk, it's south same.
Yeah.
Not, there was no sidewalk where she is, there's just like.
Yeah, I used to run that road all the time, your sidewalks there.
Okay.
Just curb cut.
Maybe not, maybe not on the, um.
I'm on the driveway.
No, I'll be on the other, on the bridge.
On the bridge, no, no, that's, that's up.
Right.
Um.
And it's, the zone change is different too, they're not, they're not asking, it's when you make site improvements.
Mm-hmm.
That for a zone change, we don't, we don't require it, when they, if they came in and asked for, if they had no sidewalks, and like you came and asked, change the sites somehow. Then we would require sidewalks to be installed.
So someone, he's gonna re, he needs to put sidewalks in here, or some bond.
Yeah.
It's a posting a bond, can you just explain to me one more time?
Typically, what it is, hypothetically, the price is, I'm just drawing a number, twenty grand.
Okay.
It's a percentage of that for the premium. That you would pay, it's kind of like your car insurance, you have collision on your car for ten grand, you're paying three hundred dollars.
Like your deductible kind of thing?
Okay.
What you're insuring is that you're gonna do the work.
Eventually, got it.
So you're paying a cover.
And now, is, what is the? What is that length of time until?
That's something you have to check with the insurance company, that's gonna submit the bond on your behalf.
It's, it's typically like a year, two years, somewhere, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
That's, you know, this is another, just throwing it out there, you know, he decided he wants to sell the property tomorrow, what happens with that? They all bonded? Great question, you know what I mean? I think that's a stipulation, and then, you know, maybe he just needs to go for it or something, I don't have a clear answer on that. You know, if he's not doing it and transfers the property at some point, what happens to that reward? And who's, who's on the hook, that's, is that definitely a legal question, you know, I mean, just arbitrarily, I would say. That's a condition of any future sale too, that that needs to be.
I think that's a liability transfer by that point, and the owner has to take it out.
Just like a solar panel on your house, I mean, you gotta transfer the ownership, right?
Yeah, unless there's something on the land records.
That's one scenario I've never dealt with, so.
You know, this is simply like a sewer uh component, where they come through and put sewer in the road, you're assessed. You're not.
That connection, yeah.
You know, but there's tax lien on your property.
Yep.
You know, that may be something that needs to be looked at.
Yep.
In which directions, gentlemen, who.
The asset, that's survival.
Well, it's just the, the charity bond is gonna be the cheapest way for you to, for you to do it, cause otherwise it's a cash bond.
Right.
For the entire cost of the sidewalk.
I just wanted to mention, um, when we had our first meeting, I was there for that, um, and it sounded a lot like, oh, it's just, you know, just some, some plans and. And, uh, you know, we'll just make everything right and and get this done. It seemed like the sidewalk was an afterthought, I mean, this kind of came out, when did that, when'd you get that letter?
Um, so in this, um, review, it was a couple of weeks ago, the sidewalk was, um, brought to my attention.
Right, this was brought on the table, what, six months ago?
Right, and that's, that's based on when we received comments from police traffic and engineer. Um, so it's, it's not, it's not us that, that, that feedback from them, yeah, we usually give, we give a deadline that at the latest is about two weeks before the meeting. So they, you know, it was like the very end of that deadline.
That's why he's just getting like peppered with stuff at the end.
Well, so did I, it all came in at once, so.
Yeah.
I prefer to have a lot sooner than that too, but being what it is.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, this has been operating without the rules, I.
Right, wow, for a while, yeah, you know, so, by the same token, we're working with you.
A hundred percent agree.
You know what I mean?
Yep, you know, I I fully agree with you.
Yeah, and as I said, the way our regulations are written, it's, it's up to those two entities to tell, to, to. You know, wait the sidewalks, and they're saying we want sidewalks.
You know, now, does that come to? You know, now, does that come to a vote like this, there's three entities are saying, so there's like you, there's traffic, there's the.
What's engineering?
And.
Yeah, it's police tra, it's the, it's Sergeant Wall, it's police traffic.
Right.
And city engineer. Um, and they.
They don't have any field power.
They advise us on if they want sidewalks installed.
They said they want them, that's part of the deal. Oh, yeah, you freak out, you come on.
Yeah, which is why we're trying to, we're trying to make the argument, we're trying to make the argument for it, or I am anyway, I'm not changing the parking, but I don't.
Right.
Really, we have a sidewalk.
Right.
And the bushes. Well, the parking too, you're asking to reduce the pad that he has already for setback purposes, so even if you wanted to redirect it into the main line.
Yeah, it's my.
Wasn't the purpose, it just doesn't work.
Yeah. Any other commissioners have any questions? That are zooming over?
Right, so the summon up, he has to abide by the sidewalk component.
Right, yes, which is, you know, which I have in the conditions, okay.
Yeah, it's conditional, so.
All right.
Read it.
Go ahead now.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Site Plan fourteen twenty-three, Advocate Ryan Hatchelder. Location ten fifty, Main Street, Proposal Site Plan Change. Use of a portion of the property for single family use to carry out food service and vehicle storage use with the following conditions and recommendations. One final plan shall include a sidewalk along East Main Street in accordance with section five point one, three point three point K. Of the zoning regulations, the applicant shall file. Two, the applicant shall file comments of Paul Hudson, City Engineer, with respect to parking alignment. And access management along Upper Grand Avenue outlined in his October eighteen twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Three, the applicant shall follow the advice of Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Waldis with respect to parking alignment. Access management and sidewalk installation as outlined in his eight, October eighteen twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Four, zoning permits are required prior to alteration. Or use of the site for the proposed use. Five, the applicant shall contact the Torrenton Area Health District and obtain compliance with public health codes. Prior to approval of zoning permits to perform site work or operate on the site. Six, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the approved plan, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature, acts on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of site plan filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P. Of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant and city clerk after the signature. Of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Second.
Would you have a favor, could you ask for the?
Aye.
Allow that parking on the?
Uh, yeah, just, um, as as part of our discussion, we're we're not gonna require changes to be, to the.
So that's not.
Suggested parking.
That wasn't a condition.
That wasn't a condition, and no.
I I put it, I put it in there as a, yeah, I think I copied it there, but.
Which you just forgot that.
So we're we're gonna strike, we're gonna.
What we strike?
Two and three, under two and three?
Under two and three.
Oh.
Yeah.
Doesn't do with the parking. So we're amending the, uh.
I just, Donna made a motion when she's amending.
Right, I don't remember.
Well, it's used to copy and paste.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, that we're getting on the records, all right.
Second amendment, first two, all is in favor?
Aye.
Right.
So, good luck.
Thank you.
We're gonna agenda item number six, public hearing is beginning at seven thirty on November sixteen, twenty twenty-two, City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen. One forty, Main Street, Torrenton, Connecticut, A, proposed amendments. The City of Torrenton zoning regulations, Advocate Torrenton Mainz zoning commission, proposal. Proposed zoning regulation amendments, remove residential density caps to downtown district. Such as three point one, four point one five, and six point eight. So we're down to agenda number seven, new business. A, Site Plan fourteen twenty-four, Advocate C three Ventures LLC, location thirty-five sixty-eight Winston Road. Proposal adult use cannabis hybrid facility is the applicant attendance, please.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Thomas McCray, thirty-five sixty-eight Winston Road. Uh, I'm the managing partner for Still River Wellness, we've been operating. Uh, our medical marijuana dispenser facility here in Torrenton since two thousand and nineteen. Uh, and pursuant to Public Act twelve oh one, uh, we've been, we have the opportunity to convert to a hybrid retail facility. Which will allow for both medical and adult use cannabis sales at the same facility. Uh, so that's what we're here today to present, um, happy to answer any questions you may have. Uh, otherwise, I can turn it over to, uh, Todd from Leonard Engineering to answer any site plans and setups. Which one do you think taught this one?
Uh, I I can do it from here, but yeah, that's the one I was.
Yeah.
So, uh, for the record, Todd Parsons with Leonard Engineering, uh, we prepared the site plan package for this facility. Um, included in there is the cover sheet, there's a, uh, survey. Uh, prepared by a land surveyor, upstate boundary and total graphic survey. Our our site plan. And our site layout plan, which is the one I'll use, uh, for presentation. So, this property is, uh, in the LB zone, the, um, AM overlay district. It has a fifty-six hundred square foot, uh, building here, existing building. Paved parking in front, paved parking on the south side. And a gravel parking in the back. On this map, north is pointing generally up, this is Winston Road, and this is Pinewood Road, it's across from where. Uh, Marino's Restaurant used to be. Uh, towards the back of the property is some lawn area beyond the gravel, and then a tree area beyond that. The existing medical marijuana is on, uh, north end of the building, and the new operation will occur south and so on. Uh, yep, it's proposing to, uh, reviving siding on the building, all the way around. Um, and the older, uh, windows and doors will be replaced also. We're proposing, uh, we're showing below here, a new sidewalk in front, and on the south side of the building. New landscaped islands at both ends of the building here and here. And to repay, uh, re-stripe the paved parking in front. We're also showing, uh, parking behind the building, that will be gravel. Uh, we had, uh, several conversations and, uh, some meeting time with your staff. And we developed, uh, a plan to address some of their concerns primarily related to. Incoming and outgoing traffic, uh, and the potential for conflicts with the motel property, which is next door. So they share the same driveway, and there are easements, uh, cross easements over the driveway. And the resulting plan. Um, improves the signage on the property, will have, uh, all. Plaza traffic come in and go around the building one way. The motel traffic will come in, enter here. And will exit out this way. And, uh, plaza traffic will exit out the same area, so there's gonna be a a little curved island. Placed along the edge there to direct the traffic. And signage directing, um, people who are coming in, either go to the plaza. In this direction or into the motel in that direction. And there's gonna be one-way signs and stop signs to manage that. Uh, we did, uh, attend the ARC meeting, uh, last week, they issued a favorable review. Uh, we did have, as I mentioned, comments from some of your staff, which we addressed. Uh, we did get a chance to, it's a study. We did get a chance to, um, review Jeremy's memo, uh, he's recommending approval with some conditions, and the applicant. Does not have any objection to those conditions. Thank you.
Listen, the fellow this property have the same order or no?
No.
You wanna, uh, quickly point out our discussion about the followers, just for traffic direction?
Um, yeah, so, because this driveway currently is pretty wide. Um, and we're trying to funnel it into, you know, more controlled area. Uh, what we did is we are placing some planters that can be removed if if necessary for, uh, snow removal. Um, in the far north section of the driveway, and that will funnel all the traffic through here. So we did get a letter that was submitted, uh, to Jeremy from the motel owner that allows us to to make those changes.
So no other modifications to the exterior or anything for security?
Uh, well, we do have a security plan.
Yeah, there's gonna be, uh, installed exterior security cameras on that side of the building.
With all additional, uh, building space or reinforcements of the building whatsoever.
Well, you have the ball.
Interior ball.
It's gonna be a seven years ago. Probably only ten years.
One single use for the building?
Well, it'll still be broken down through medical and adult use.
Correct, but it's only, what I'm saying is it's for that, it's for.
Adult use, it's.
Essentially, the whole building is still ready to can.
Yes.
And the adult? I don't know how how the hours are for these new establishments for retail, are they open quite a bit hour-wise, like?
It depends on facility from the facility, or typically the local municipality has the authority to, uh, enact hours of operation. Uh, but we propose nine AM to eight PM, some basically.
And in my, uh, in my memo, I just reiterate that in the conditions. I want you to go to your memo, please, great. See if I can get through this one. C three Ventures LLC has filed an application on behalf of the property owners, L N T West Haven LLC. For property at thirty-five sixty-eight Winston Road. Tax assessors map two forty-two, block zero zero two, lot zero zero one. To change the use of a portion of the building on the property from a previous retail use to an adult use cannabis retail facility. The applicant also proposes changes to the site, including traffic, including the traffic entrance from Winston Road. Traffic flow around the site, landscaping, and updated parking. Improvements to the building facade and building interior are also proposed. The property is owned by L N T West Haven LLC, is one point zero seven acres in area, and is located in the LB local business zone. The property was approved for adoption of an alternate incarceration cannabis dispensary. AM overlay zone and subsequent medical cannabis facility under Site Plan number twelve sixty-three on April eleven twenty eighteen. As the AM zone overlay has been previously adopted on this property with with the underlying LB zone. The proposed retail adult use cannabis use is allowed by Site Plan approval under zoning regulations, section. Three point one, table of permitted uses, subsection twenty-two point zero three. And the requirements of section four point one six, alternate incarceration cannabis dispensary overlay zone. A new Site Plan approval is required for this proposed change of use and proposed site modifications. Plans submitted are entitled adult use cannabis hybrid facility thirty-five sixty-eight Winston Road, Torrenton, Connecticut. By Leonard Engineering Inc., Winston, Connecticut. Dated September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, revised to October twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, five sheets. City staff has met previously with the property owners and the applicant's engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, the applicant currently operates an adult cannabis facility in a separate section of the same building. And is proposing to convert the remaining portion of the building to an adult use retail. Two, the signed document was submitted by Tab Shol Basi, owner of the underlying motel property, allowing for the installation. Of temporary planter, um, planters on portion of this property, near the entrance and exit to Winston Road. To prevent traffic from driving around proposed access improvements. Three, security bonding is required for any required landscaping unable to be completed prior to target opening date. Other staff comments, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to be dated October seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Offer the following comment on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses in the vicinity of the subject property that require wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, there is no plan for the landscaped islands adjacent to the front parking area. Yeah, and shall describe the proposed landscaping on the submitted plan, including the identification and approximate location of any tree and truck species. All plant species should be native to the east and the US. And might include short trees like river birch, eastern redwood, and flowering dogwood. Truck, truck species might include frayed wood suvack, eastern ninebark, or bayberry. Existing landscaping against the building should be retained for. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code, including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. A sign written shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application does not refer to the Conservation Commission for review and comment. Architectural review committee, this project was reviewed by the ARC at a meeting on October twenty, twenty twenty-two. The committee voted in favor of the project with the following comments. One, fabric awning, awnings or roof extensions over building entrances requested in the future should match or complement the existing building color scheme. Two, new signage should match the general design of the existing freestanding signage on the property. Three, the proposal, the proposals for addition, the addition of vinyl siding, including proposed color is acceptable. Four, the committee viewed plans for the changing of doors and windows and retaining the chimney is acceptable. Five, the committee provided favorable comments on the landscaping plans for the property. Engineering, Paul Hudson, City Engineer, in an email to be dated October eighteen, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. With regards to the site development plan, I have concern regarding the shared driveway access from Winston Road. Into the can, cannabis facility in Lakeside Hotel. The issue is that the property shared the driveway and there's crossing and conflicting traffic that will. Be much more predominant with the increased traffic to the cannabis facility. There will be crossing traffic between the traffic leaving the cannabis facility and the traffic entering to the Lakeside Hotel in order. The driveway entrance needs to be redesigned to accommodate two-way traffic. That includes the motel traffic in such a manner that traffic patterns cross safely. The attached files, file shows existing conditions and existing easements, while the second attachment shows a proposed solution that requires. The access easement in favor of the motel to be extended, for which cannabis property is easily, able to easily grant. Police traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Waldis, in an email to me dated October eighteen, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. After reviewing the updated information, I concur with Paul's concerns. About driveway entrance and exit of mixed businesses on two different parts of the property. I'm no engineer, so I'm glad Paul picked up on this. This review outlines a good way to regulate the flow of traffic. Um, to both properties, while keeping the exiting traffic conscious of the adjoining business traffic. I have no other comments to to his, but appreciate Paul's attentions on this, thank you. Uh, just before I go on, those last two for Police Traffic Engineering, we dealt with it subsequently, we answered, so they're. Those are, are solved, I guess, where I knew those three. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Seto, in an email to be dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments on the plans. I have received and reviewed the application for a change of use to adult use cannabis hybrid facility, located at three five six eight Winston Road. The fire department would provide the following general recommendations. The building should be equipped with a complete compliant fire protection system compatible with the change of use. The fact that it will be vacant during non-business hours may be a prime candidate for delayed discovered fire inside. Torrenton makes use of lock boxes to allow quick access by firefighters and time limit alarm without causing damage. If not already in existence, the lock box should be installed on the exterior of the building near the main door. The fire department will use the secure master key to open the box and allow the building owner to leave appropriate building keys inside. So that makes any delay in entering the building or waiting for a key holder to arrive in the middle of the night. The building and area must comply with all required building and electrical codes and will be. The building and area must comply with all required building and electrical codes and will be inspected by the fire marshal for compliance with life safety code prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy and annually thereafter. WPCA, no comments were received from WPCA for this application. Building, building official Kevin Gillette, in an email to be dated October thirteen, twenty twenty two, offered the following comments on the plans. Please provide the following information as it pertains when applying for the required permits. Complete sets of I E B C section one oh six construction documents as applicable, prepared by a registered design professional for all works to be performed. Complete life safety plan with occupant lower occupancy classification. I E B C classification of work and method of compliance. Complete plan for accessibility including parking, passenger loading facilities. Complete mechanical, electrical and plumbing plants. Subject to review and on-site correction, it shall be the duty of the permanent holder, whether agent, to notify the building official that such work is ready for inspection. Conclusion, I recommend approval of site plan number fourteen twenty four, thirty five sixty eight Winston Road for a site plan and change of use from previous retail use to an adult use cannabis retail use in a portion of the subject property with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall follow the comments from assistant city planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his October seventeen, twenty twenty two email specifically regarding landscape substitutions. Two, comments from Paul Hudson, city engineer, received on October eighteen, twenty twenty two and police traffic sergeant Dustin Waldis, received on October eighteen, twenty twenty two, have been resolved through subsequent meetings with the applicant's engineer and revisionist plans. The final plan shall incorporate adjustments to directional signage and parking lot markings as requested by the city engineer. Three, the applicant shall follow the comments from fire marshal Edward Sette in his October twelfth, twenty twenty two email to the city planner. Yeah, four, the applicant shall follow the requirements from building official Kevin Gillette in his October thirteen, twenty twenty two email to the city planner. Five, a security bond in a form and amount acceptable to the city shall be submitted prior to the issuance of zoning permits for any landscaping unable to be completed prior to the target opening date for the business. Six, a zoning permit is required prior to alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Seven, hours of operation shall be nine AM to eight PM, seven days a week as outlined in submitted project scope. Eight, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the approved plan, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the following plan sheets for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point three of the zoning regulations. Sheet C dash one site plan and sheet C dash two site layout plan. Each Mylar sheet shall bear the chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission and engineer's seal and my B stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed by applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Alright, permission of some of the gentlemen's questions?
One question, is this the type of facility where someone can order online and you have delivery people also?
Yeah, so initially we'll be requiring online ordering just to manage the amount of customers that will show up at any given time period and then we will be offering delivery service as well.
So obviously with this application, we've already got through all the state components and you have your license, permission, so to speak, from the state.
We don't have our formal hybrid license. They're pending a few changes, one of which would be zoning approval.
Anyone else? Everybody on Zoom?
Let's make a motion to approve site plan fourteen twenty four African C three ventures LLC, location thirty five sixty eight Winston Road. Proposal adult use cannabis hybrid facility with the probable conditions and recommendations. One, we have to get to follow the comments from assistant city planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his October seventeen, twenty twenty two email specifically regarding landscaping substitutions. Two, comments from Paul Hudson, city engineer, received on October eighteen, twenty twenty two. Two, police traffic sergeant Dustin Waldis, received on October eighteen, twenty twenty two. Have been resolved from subsequent meetings with the applicant's engineer and revisionist plans. The final plan shall incorporate adjustments to directional signage and parking lot markings as requested by the city engineer. Three, the applicant shall follow the comments from fire marshal Edward Sette in his October twelve, twenty twenty two email to the city planner. Four, the applicant shall follow the requirements from building official Kevin Gillette in his October thirteen, twenty twenty two email to the city planner. Five, a security bond in a form and amount acceptable to the city shall be submitted prior to the issuance of zoning permits for any landscaping unable to be completed prior to the target opening date for the business. Six, a zoning permit required prior to alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Seven, hours of operation shall be nine AM to eight PM, seven days a week as outlined in the submitted project scope. Eight, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four consists of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the approved plan, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the following plan sheets for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three of the zoning regulation. Sheet C dash one site plan, sheet, sheet C dash two site layout plan. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission and engineer's seal and my B stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the county city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approved works on permits to begin construction.
Thank you. All is a favor?
Aye.
All is a favor? So, good luck to the state commissioner. Moving on to agenda item number seven, B, special exception twenty two dash zero eight, site plan at fourteen twenty five, applicant Alan Realtine, location eight sixty one Torrenton Road, proposal sales of gasoline, new canopy, parking, landscaping, site work, signage. We need to set public hearing date, the suggested date is November sixteen. All is a favor?
Aye.
All is a favor? Moving on to agenda item number seven, C, change of zone map to site plan fourteen twenty six, applicant Patrick Johnson, location ninety fifty seventies Main Street, proposal change zone map to AM overlay currently LB local business adult use cannabis retail establishment. We set public hearing date, the suggested date is November sixteen, twenty twenty two.
One second.
Okay, do this.
Greg's first, one second.
Thank you. All is a favor?
Aye.
All is a favor? So, moving on to agenda item number seven, D, zoning regulation amendment, special events. We did set public hearing date, the suggested date is December twenty first, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Go ahead. I think.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Greg. All is a favor?
Aye. Aye.
All is a favor? Moving on to gentleman item number seven, E, this is the special twenty two formal housing plan, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. Gregory?
Well, I read the, you know, you sent out the copy of the basically report that you called posted. And did there, there's some structural things that sound, it sounds like we have to do and I just thought that we should kick this thing off. Let it dry out and we have things we have to do as a, for.
Yeah.
So I think what we should do is. So I will start.
What I'd like, what I've, what I've done for implementation plans in the past is kind of identify what, this is only a five-year plan. So yeah, identify what's, what short-term stuff we have and what kind of big-term stuff we have to try to separate those things out.
Start taking action on the short-term items.
I, I, to be honest with you, I haven't really thought about action items on this since we adopted it. With this, how we see this agenda was, but I think it's something to try to tackle, at least start to tackle right away.
Exactly. And I, I mean, I don't need to track, meaning that was actually intent. Intent was, hey, we got the report, there's an action item, so really involved us, we should, you know, start addressing those actions. We need to determine the site, how are you wise, which ones should we deal with?
I did send it to everyone, right? Did, I'm pretty sure it was, yeah, okay, that's one. Yeah, so it was when the final copy was submitted to the state, which made an efficient process. So, yeah, okay, I will get cracking on that for the.
I was coming out to deal with this, we need to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, we could take a minute, like one action item at a time, right, paying a hell.
Yeah, that's what they are, yeah.
Moving on to gentleman number eight, correspondence, A, zoning link violation, I'll clean. Everybody should have names for court. So we have two, we have two, I mean, I guess the most important focus is we have two things sitting with, with this to deal, to deal with. And you'll, you'll notice number one on that list is nineteen Rule Street. Our approval of the site from earlier in the the agenda here is hopefully going to address all the violations on Rule Street. As the commercial bid was moved over to that side. So we're kind of almost two birds and one stone on this. On that application. But we have both Felicity Lane and New Vic Road, this kind of active, really active by him right now. That I, I'm still, that I'm still taking care of because they started moving, so I'm trying to get a hold of finish line. The rest, the rest of everything on here is pretty much in eighth stance now. So if there's any comments you want me to take back, questions. I, I still know a lot about most of these things on the list because they were mine, but. Oh, it's not too time for us because it's, it's polite. I think, yeah, I can get a report for that.
I know.
Yeah, that's basically, it's, it's, it's a sick way, you know, for us. We bring, we bring it up twice a month when we talk about it. Now, yeah, yeah.
Well, the Alan Rosen property, which, yeah, I find that was before closing. Now we're waiting to find.
It's still, it's still mad. Like we waited a while for all of it to go through and we started another, started another case.
Yeah.
Still a lot of violations. I think, we, we try to, try to actually update, update it each time we meet.
In any case, we, we want to go through the proposal again.
Yeah. I mean, the, the choice is, you know, we sit here, we sit on the fines for raising property in the fines.
You, I don't know the name of the business.
Not with them, but we're still doing regular inspections. And conditions changes. She usually does an inspection right before most of our meetings because we have our, we have our two or three problem issues, you know, that kind of head to table and, like, so she, she follows up with those usually every two, two to three weeks, so. Alright, time's line forty seven, moving on to gentleman item number nine, German.
Motion.
All is a favor?
Aye. Aye.
All is a favor? Good night, everyone. Thanks.